Okay, we are good to go.
All right, thank you. Call to order the Tuesday, December 1st, 2020 meeting of the Weathersfield Planning and Zoning Commission. Joe, would you please call the attendance?
Okay. Rich Roberts is here, Ryan Allard.
Yep, here.
Joe Hammer's here, Jim Hughes. George Euchel. Tom Dean.
Here.
Tony Homicki. Dave Edwards.
Here.
Michael Viera.
Here.
David Drake.
Here.
Yolanda Antoniak.
Cheers.
George, George has joined us now.
Okay. Hi, George. All right, so I think that takes us up to nine. Both of the alternates will be seated for tonight. Primarily, we have three public hearings tonight, and I know most of you have probably been involved in public hearings that we have at one time or another. What generally how they'll go is the applicant goes first. Members of the commission may have some questions for the applicant, there'll be some back and forth. Once that's done, we will open it up to members of the public who wish to speak on the application, either in favor, against, or with questions. Depending on how much commentary there is and whether there are any open issues, we may decide to continue the hearing if the commission believes that it's received enough information to adequately evaluate the application. We would move to close the hearing, then go into deliberations on the application. And that would all be done here at this meeting, but once the hearing is closed, there's no more public input from either the applicant, their representatives, or members of the general public. On the first item, public hearing application, 2059-20-Z Eleanor Hawkeye LLC, seeking a special permit in accordance with 52H of the Weathersfield zoning regulations for a contractor's storage yard at 61 Arrow Road. That hearing is continued from our November 17th meeting. And we'll pick up where we left off. I guess there is one thing that I would like to say that I think is very important, particularly for commission members, is that we should limit our discussion, commentary, evaluation, insights to the application before us and not relitigate literally or figuratively things that may have occurred in the past with respect to the property. It's just not fair to the property owner, it's not fair to the applicant, so you know, while there is a history there, we leave it in the history and focus on what it is that they are proposing to do right now, what the condition of the site is right now, and the compliance of that application with our special permit requirements. I think we should try to remain on that track during the process this evening. So with that, I will ask the applicant if he has had any further conversations or additional information since our last meeting. There were a variety of kind of open issues and concerns that had been raised. And at this point, I'll ask the applicant to identify himself by name and address for the record and present anything that he chooses to.
Yes, good evening. This is Dan D. Dominicus, 76 Lordstown Road is my current address. A few things I'd like to add. I did send over to the commission some photos. I know last time I had a drawing with some markouts on it for you guys, and I went a couple photos, aerial photographs, so you can kind of get a better visual of what's there now. That current day, there was only one truck in the lot, but it kind of helps visually show exactly what's laid out in the yard. And I did also meet with Peter and the engineer out on site, which I know those are attached to this application. And because one of the things that came up last week was about paving the lot. We agree, or the engineer had also agreed to leave the lot as it sits. And he wanted to include a drainage ditch around the perimeter fencing, which we have no problem working with and doing that and installing that to help better drain the site the way it is, but as leaving it as gravel. One of the other issues I know, or was a concern, was the porta potties being visible and moving the porta potties. And we talked to the property superintendent, and we were going to be moving them down away from the road, but also we can put a stockade fence around them to better match their view for the public passing by as well. And one of the major things we'll be doing to help with another visual appeal is moving the bucket trucks. And I did include that in one of the pictures. Right now, that day I took the pictures is where our employees park, but we'll be moving larger vehicles to that side of the lot to help. And from there, it would be a lot less of a visual from the crossings area and the main road as well backed into the backside of the fence. And moving around the other equipment as well to get it to the other side of our property, the west side. But outside of that, that would all I'll add this evening.
Okay. Peter, did you think that, thought I said Derek was on here as well? Do either you or Derek have any further observations or information for the commission?
Well, in your packet, you did receive a copy of an email from Derek dated November 25th. He did join me on the site visit specifically so that we could discuss whether the property needed pavement added and whether there would be drainage related to that. So as you are aware, and as we've discussed at previous meetings, he is attempting to comply with some state requirements to minimize the amount of surface area within the community that is paved in terms of pervious and impervious coverage. So he has an email basically suggesting relates to that, and based on the site conditions, he would prefer that the site remain gravel as it exists today. With a, just a recommendation that they, the applicant, construct a shallow level trench along the entire length of the new fence on the east side that is at least five feet wide and a foot and a half deep to contain the water quality volume on site and promote infiltration. And he's asking that it be topsoiled and seeded for stabilization. So that was his specific recommendation on the issue that was raised the last time around about paving the lot. I do have a memo also that I prepared dated November 25th, which basically summarized the site meeting and the issues that were discussed on site. And then referenced the additional attachments submitted by the applicant. So if you have any questions, you can refer to both of those, both of those pieces of correspondence in the file.
I see the the list of items that you have in your November 25th memo. The applicant talked about a couple of them, but a number of them seem to be, still be open, is that correct? Or did I miss something?
I would probably let the applicant, I'll let Dan, you know, respond. We did discuss each of these issues out on the site with the intention, you know, going over those with you tonight. So I would defer to Dan maybe to speak to those. Dan, I believe you did get a copy of my November 25th memo, so maybe you want to go through those items that we discussed?
Yes, Graham, I'm looking at it right now. I missed that earlier. Yeah, yeah, so the toilets, I went over the toilets, less visible with the fence around the toilets, the detailed plan, I looked at that as those aerial photos that I submitted. Kind of tell the exact story of where everything is and propose where we move the trucks. The generator, I mean, when we were on site, the generator was running and we could barely hear it. And that is supposed to be removed anyways, moving forward if this goes together correctly. And the relocation of the trailers, that would be the large equipment trailer that looks like a tractor trailer trailer, that would also be moved. I did not mark that on that picture, but we plan to move that to the west side of the fence and then replace that larger pole pile in the picture over to where the tractor trailer, material trailer is. And then as far as nighttime lighting, we don't have any lights. Retaining the site, I know there might be some parking lot lights to the building, but we physically don't have any lights erected in our lot. And I think maybe, because I know a few homeowners of the crossings had mentioned the lighting issue at night, and I'm talking to the guys, sometimes they come home at night, maybe it's from my understanding, it's the headlights shining past the fence into the houses when we pull in with the bucket trucks. And we could always add a taller buffer to that fence if that is the case, but we do not have any overhead lighting illuminating the site. and then the other thing with, the biggest thing, I guess, was the bucket truck arms. So I spoke with the foreman and the guys on site. And we're going to work to, we rolled out a plan to have the guys keep, we have to keep them up off the deck of the truck, but we can, we can lower them down as low as we can, but as high as we can at the same time to keep that visibility from seeing it from the crossings. And with the addition of moving the trucks to the other side of the lot, it will definitely aid in a less visual appeal, trucks sitting there in that lot.
Okay.
Can I interrupt with a quick question on the bucket stuff? Does that rule where you have to keep it elevated? I mean, I'm assuming it's because you don't want anybody like jumping in it and doing anything. But is that, does that rule still apply when you close that fence up and lock it up at night? Or do you lock it up at night?
Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't, and I guess it depends on the day. But most of it is because there's tools, there's tooling that stays in the bucket overnight. And that was, it was a safety concern of, one, people climbing in and out, and two, either stolen or damage of the tools or the trying to operate the tools as well that are sitting in the bucket. But we're going to work, keep them is, is high enough where you can't climb in it from the truck, which would definitely considerably be lower than what it is right now.
Thank you.
One of the things that we had, or at least I had asked about last time was what the maximum number of trucks, bucket trucks on site would be at any one time?
As far, I mean, we can, we could limit, if you wanted to limit. I know what we need to have to that crew to operate is six or seven trucks at a time. And like I said, the only reason others would be in that is if it was outside work in the area. But if you would like to limit the amount, we can certainly have a max amount of vehicles that will go in there. But we do need six, seven, or eight vehicles, larger trucks to operate out of that yard.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I guess my concern was having it completely open-ended. I mean, if you have six, seven, or eight, and the limit is 10, that's different from 30.
Correct, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, and that's, that's understood, that's, if that's what this comes to be, or, but that's fine. If we have a limit of 10 trucks, we could say 10 trucks would be our max that we're able to work with that, no problem.
Anyone else on the commission have any questions for the applicant?
What about the screening that was noted in the conversation with Peter and Derek? Was there any talk about additional screening on the property?
Yes, as far as visual screen isn't fencing, is that what you're, or any type of visual aid to block?
Yeah, like a visual, yep, it could be either.
Yeah, so we, similar to about the lighting issue along the, I guess you would call it the north side that faced that abuts directly to the crossings. We could erect a little bit taller fence that, that is higher than the headlight line of the vehicles when they approach in, which would definitely help in not being able to see lights or the lights going into the windows of the homeowner across the way.
One of the other items on
Richard Lagan.
Richard, you're delaying early morning hours to minimize the backup.
Yeah, so with yes, with us moving the vehicles, they'll be backed in in the evening against that fence, which come morning, all we would have to do was pull out and there would be no, no type of noise from the vehicles. Or in the backup line. But the end of the day, it'll have to be evening or morning, no matter what, but I'm I'm sure everyone could agree that having it clocked them back up for 15 minutes would be much better than six AM in the morning, while I still be sleeping.
Okay, I hope somebody else heard that while I'm gone. Does anyone else on the commission have any questions for the applicant? No, you're muted, George.
I'm muted.
Now I'm muted, okay?
Yes.
Yeah. The height of the fence bothered me when I was over there looking recently. And only at the height of the buckets. Now, if you can lower those buckets slightly, all of them, that's all that's needed to prevent it being an issue with the condos. And you said, I think you're going to try to do that, is that correct, Dan?
Yeah, that's correct. Yep, we'll be able to lower them as, as low as we can while still being, which is most likely, it's realistically half, if not more than half of what they are seeing.
Okay. And another thing, in keeping with the town engineer's recommendation not to, we suggested paving. And I agree with not paving it, but if you could smooth out the lot and put a little more gravel in, I mean, I think it would help a bit as long as it's, it's a nicer looking lot that way. And I think that was an issue when I was over there, but the, I thought I saw, explain this to me, please. The, there's trash outside the fence. Now, they would say that's the states outside your, out of fence toward the Russell Road, right? Is that, do you keep that, or pick it up once in a while, maybe once a year or something out there?
The, I mean, wouldn't be our trash, but the, you're referring to what's between the Russell Road and our fence.
And the fence, yeah, the black fence, yeah.
Yes. That, that could be arranged, I, I mean, our trash would all in the dumpster, but if that is, or if that was there from before us, or if that's just from, from the people or just from whatever.
Right. Peter, what do you say about that?
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to say who's the generator of that trash, but obviously if it's along the front of the property, it would be the property owner's, you know, responsibility to at least try and maintain and pick that up, so.
That could be a condition then, Peter, if we wanted it?
I don't know, it should be a condition on this applicant, but if you want to make a note for the record, we can pass that on to the Russell Road Properties LLC.
Okay, I like that.
Okay.
What about the trash container? There's a big trash container in the site. Is that, it's a black one, is that going to be fenced, Dan, or not? Don't you think it's needed, or what?
In, I mean, we have, yes, our dumpster that's inside our fence now. We would think that would be sufficient enough inside our already fenced area. Outside, you're talking about seeing it inside, inside the fence?
Yeah, just inside on the right, I think it is, yeah.
Yes. You'd like to fence it?
That's in pretty good shape, it's new, it looks new painted.
Yeah, that's
That an issue at all? I know you get concerned about containers, trash containers. That happens to be an extra big one.
Yeah, I believe it's a 30-yard container, that would be for like our aluminum wire and
Oh, yeah, you have a lot of equipment that's would be required to go on something like that. Peter, is that an issue at all?
No, I think since it's inside the yard and behind the fence, and the fence gets
Probably all right.
Yeah, I think it's, it's fine, and we were
It's in good shape too, Peter, so.
It's inside the area, so we don't.
Okay. That's all for me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Drew. Anyone else on the commission have questions for the applicant? Going once. If I'll open it up to members of the public who wish to speak on this application. You take turns and unmute yourselves, Mary.
I'm Mary Rahm, I live at 10 Tanner Crossing. I'd like to know why you're considering waiving the requirement for a paved lot since that's been a condition of approval for any prior application? What's the change between now and then? It's a mess in there. I drove by yesterday, we're talking about drainage. You're talking about drainage and trying to address that and just the look of the lot. Water actually does drain into that lot. The nearest storm drains are at the corner of Russell Road and Arrow Road and at Tinsmith. So along the entire length of the property, there are no storm drains on Russell Road. The water yesterday was raining really badly, and when I came home, I looked carefully to see what was happening out there. It drains right down into the lot. So I'm just curious, you know, why is there no requirement for him to pave it and assure some kind of drainage? And prior requirements had lighting and landscaping in the lot. What's the difference? Would other businesses in town not be able to use gravel lots now instead of paved? I'm a little confused, I guess, by the change between the last meeting and this one.
Yeah, I'll let, I'll let Peter amplify, but I think basically there, there has in fact been a change in either state law or state application of federal law with respect to storm drainage and impervious surfaces and things like that. Where the town now has basically mandate to have less paved impervious surfaces than, you know, than would otherwise be the case in order to, you know, minimize or reduce the amount of storm drainage runoff that gets put into the combined sanitary storm sewer overflows and, you know, goes to Long Island Sound. It's essentially an EPA requirement that is being interpreted by deep and imposed on towns that have to comply with these changes in the regulations. And the current town engineer is being, I won't say aggressive, but he's being more careful about making sure that where there is an opportunity to have impervious ground cover, that we take advantage of it. I don't know, Peter, is there more to it than that?
No, I think you, you've covered it adequately. The commission did ask the town engineer to inspect the site and make some recommendations, and his recommendations were to keep it gravel, construct some trenching to get the storm water that you mentioned back into the ground through infiltration trenches rather than pave it and then have to put catch bases and drainage and then have it go offsite somewhere and affect somebody downstream. So it is something we look at in all cases, and the commission makes a decision on a case-by-case basis.
So then the Popeye's Drive-Thru could have a gravel lot?
Little different. It's not apples to apples, but on a case-by-case basis, they could have asked for that, but obviously they've got drive-throughs and parking lots with the public coming and going, so not a, not a fair comparison.
This feels like rewarding a long history of bad behavior on the part of the owner who has previously disagreed with paving the lot and in fact drew a hard line on paving the lot in the past. So it's like, it's a gimme for him. I don't see, I really don't see what's changed. The lot looks nasty. Yesterday, when I drove by it, there was standing water in it. There are large potholes in it. The gate's wide open, we can see everything that's in there. We can see the, the inside of the lot from the road, basically. They can raise the fence height on the, on the northern side closer to the crossings, but we'll still see it as we drive by. And it's the only way we have into and out of our neighborhood, which makes, and it abuts us directly. It sort of makes it the de facto welcome mat to the crossings. So it really should be looking a little bit nicer than it is now. I don't have a problem with Eleanor Hawkeye. I think if, if, as you said, they park, you know, back vehicles in and move like that gigantic trailer you can see from a mile away to the back of the lot, and the same thing with their trucks where we can't see them so much. I'm not anti-business, that's fine with me. But you also probably want to think about putting a limit on the amount of stuff that can be put in that lot or the number of vehicles, because they won't be there forever, and they may wind up being a good neighbor, but the owner of the property hasn't been a good neighbor historically. And how do we know what's going to wind up in there next? Is it going to be a whole bunch of earthmoving equipment or gigantic tractor trailers? Or I'm just concerned about where this goes from here, if there's not some kind of, I don't know, if you can't rein this in somehow. We have to live here, you guys don't, you know?
No, I know, but, you know, I hope you understand that we are taking your concern seriously. I mean, we've, we've had to deal with things for a while. When, when a special permit is issued, it's generally pretty closely tied to the application, so you know, if, if this tenant were to leave, someone else coming in would have to go through some kind of process similar to this. You know, if it was doing anything different or had different types of equipment.
Okay, so Eleanor Hawkeye moved in there, and they were there for a while before they ever wound up in front of this commission. So what's to stop the owner from renting the lot to someone else? And he has, I know you can't talk about the history, but I can. He has a long history of doing exactly that. And then when someone catches up with it, the tenant winds up in front of this committee trying to get a special permit or, or get a waiver for having the lot paved. It just, I can't get past this feeling like you're rewarding bad behavior.
Well, I, I don't really make sure I am not muted. I don't really see it as, as rewarding bad behavior. I think, I wasn't at the last meeting, but based on the, the information I have and, and the report of meeting from, from two weeks ago, it looks like, like the commission and, and the town planner and the town engineer listened to people's concerns in the neighborhood, and it's well documented what those concerns are. And that's why the very next day, the, Peter reached out to have a meeting with, with Dan, I think it was, out in the field. And so the three of them went over the concerns, and that's documented, and that's what we were talking about earlier in the meeting. So, so we were just trying to make sure that he is going to adhere to the discussions and those, those conditions, I'll call them. And with respect to the second point you made, which is what's the difference with, with Popeye's property, you know, over by Jordan Lane and this one? How come that one's going to be paved and this one's not? That's a different, that's a different type of application. And And, and right now, currently, the lot that we're talking about isn't paved. It's gravel. So it's impervious. If you pave it, that just creates more runoff and as, as both, um, you know, as both gentlemen mentioned, that just creates, uh, there's more regulation. In the case of, of the Popeye property that we'll be talking about later, that's, that's existing pavement. And they're actually reducing the amount of pavement in that. So that's not, that's not apples and apples. So, and I just wanted to clarify that. I don't know if that helped clarify things, but, but that's just how I, how I see this application.
I respect that. It, it's, it's just that this lot was supposed to be paved for previous applications that came through, and now suddenly it doesn't have to be paved. And that's where, that's where I get stuck a little. It does look nasty from the road. If there's some way that you can ensure, I don't know whether it's sending the ZO out on a regular basis or whatever, that the lot looks good, maybe that they close the gate to the street so we don't have to look at it so much when they're not actively using the lot. Just, just something to make it a little bit more visually appealing. I realize there's like a limit to what you can do here, and I, I'm not trying to, to squash this guy's business. Everybody's got to make some money, but we have to live here and I don't want it to hurt our property.
I understand. Yep.
I think the, the gravel.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I think the gravel that's being put out there is like, it, it's, you guys, um, if anybody, if anybody wants to speak to this, feel free. Like, it, it looks like you're just spreading gravel out on top of the bare soil and maintaining it and putting new gravel out every time a rut forms, as opposed to hogging out any of that material, actually putting down like a decent sub base, especially in the heavily traveled areas like the entry and the exit. So, you know, I think there's for sure room to improve the gravel and still maintain the, the pervious nature of, of the area. So, um, I think if we're going to talk about something later on in the meeting, we should at least set some sort of guidelines or have the engineer be able to review what is being installed in this pervious area.
No, thanks. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak on this application?
Uh, yes, I would. Um, my name is.
Repeat you to it.
My name is Lynn Burdick. I'm at fifty-eight Tinsmith Crossing. Um, I guess I would reiterate, and I won't repeat everything, but I, I agree with what Mary said. And I, I appreciate you going out and doing the investigation and coming up with some suggestions. I like the idea of moving the trucks further, lowering, um, you know, the, the section above, you know, the dump. I forgot what you called it, but the, you know, lowering the, um, buckets, thank you. And moving them. But, um, I wonder if there's a way that, and I, I think and hope that these are going to be great neighbors for us. But if in fact they do leave, is there a way that you can put a stipulation in that before he rents it to somebody else? They're not there for six months and then we have to go through this all over again, but that you could make sure that the owner comes to the Planning and Zoning Commission first before they actually sign a lease? Is that a stipulation that you can share with him?
We can talk about that, you know, put it on the list of things to discuss.
Because I've been on, on some of these meetings and, you know, there's been two or three folks that he's rented to. One or two were okay and a couple of them didn't, didn't meet the requirements. So it seems a shame to have, not only us have to go through this, but to have the people that want to rent it find out that they can't utilize that for what they were thinking of doing. And I, I think in fairness to both us as well as new customers for him, that, you know, he abides by that. So I guess that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Joan, try again. You're mute.
Still muted.
Unmuted. Okay.
There you go.
Sorry. Um, so I had this, uh, this little thing I was going to read, but, um, a couple of things came up, so, um, I'll only read part of it. I just, um, my name is Joan Slavirio. I live at sixty-two Tinsmith Crossing, and I've lived at the Crossing since nineteen eighty-four. And when I moved in, the property at sixty-one Arrow Road was Arrow Manufacturing. And, you know, I didn't have any issues with that, um, but I thought a storage facility would also be fine. But instead, um, some liberties have been taken with the property and, um, like there was someone living in one of the storage units and so forth and so on, who has since moved out. But anyway, um, I, I don't think that the commission actually intended for people to be living in these storage units. My point is just that sometimes, um, that the commission, you know, grants the owner of this facility a special permit, and the results go off and beyond what has been granted. And, you know, that's, that's one of my concerns. You know, we're a community of a hundred and seventy-two homeowners, and, you know, we probably pay as much in taxes as, as the storage facility and its tenants, and, you know, um, I just want to make sure that we're heard. So having, having made those few brief remarks there, um, I just want to say that there were, you know, during the, um, the storm, there were, um, not only was the lot pretty full with, with bucket trucks, but they were also, um, the Cedar Hill, Cedar Crest Hospital, um, property there as well. So they went, you know, there were a lot of bucket trucks. Not that I minded them being there, because I knew that it meant that we would get our electricity back, um, quicker. But anyway, there, there is a tendency, um, when there is a need in the area to have more bucket trucks, uh, than initially was probably envisioned. And I guess, um, one of the other things I just want to bring up is that, one of the issues, yeah, you know, the, the truck or the, the trailer has been moved to the back of the lot, but that means it's, it's actually closer to the, the people on the back of Potter and the cul-de-sac of Potter Crossing. So, um, you know, it's just, it's the same material. It's just being moved to a different location. Um, and it's, like I said, it's probably closer now to, to the crossings maybe than it was. Because before it was closer to the road, now it's in the back, and it's actually closer to the backs of those property. But, um, I was just wondering if there was anything that could be done in terms of natural barriers, like maybe putting in some kind of berm there or, um, like a natural barrier, like, I'm not sure what the, what kind of trees were put, um, on the corner of Russell Road and, um, Cedar, uh, Cedar Street. But it's like there's a berm, and then on top of that, there's these, I don't know what you want to call them. There is some kind of natural barrier that, that helps with, you know, with the visual image. So I guess I would ask the commission to consider asking the owner to put some kind of natural barrier, because the trees have been taken down. The lot really is encroaching more on our property than before. So if there's something that could be done to alleviate that, um, that would really be helpful.
Thank you. I guess just so that, you know, I, I think most if not all of us have been out there, the, kind of the geometry of what you're talking about is that the houses are down lower. Then you look up the hill at the fence, and then you look at the trailer over the fence. Okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, anyone else in the public wishing to comment on this application?
Yes, I would like to. Karen Malinfonte, eighty-one School House, hi, eighty-one School House Crossing. I've, um, been at the Crossings for eight years. And, um, Arrow Road has gone from something I barely noticed to something, um, I have to say that's grown quite a bit since I've been here in eight years. I do agree with what Mary has to say, and I do like many of the suggestions that, that the current tenant is offering to do. My concerns are what are going, if the, the stipulations that you make in the special permit such as X amount of trucks and the requirement that they only back up the trucks. In other words, uh, there's a quiet hour from such and such hours and things like that. What would be their, their recourse for them not, um, following those things? If it comes to it where they're not being quiet or they're doing things that are not allowed in the permit that gets granted?
I, I guess the short answer is that either you or some other resident would draw that to the attention of the zoning enforcement officer who would go and probably start with.
Like, what would deter them from not abiding by the rule or the, the stipulations made in the special permit? If it's just a matter of somebody complaining or letting the zoning commission know that they're parking on one day eight trucks and another day fifteen trucks, but then the next day they're back to eight trucks? If that makes any sense, do you, I don't know if you're following where I'm going with this?
Yeah, and I, I was, I was going to try to answer, which was basically.
I apologize. Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
This, it's one of the difficulties of not being able to see each other. You know, being in the same room is, is, nobody can take advantage of the, the kind of social cues. Basically, I mean, either, either you or one of the other residents would complain or the zoning enforcement officer would go drive by, take a look. Somebody would tell them, take a look. And depending on the nature of the violation, it could be anything from, you know, a warning letter to a cease and desist letter, to citations with fines associated with them. Or, you know, ultimately potentially a show cause hearing, you know, asking the applicant to come in and explain why the special permit shouldn't be revoked. So it, um, you know, the, there, there are remedies. There are penalties. You know, unfortunately, there is one zoning enforcement officer in town.
Right.
You know, so that, you know, to the extent that you become aware of issues, you know, let the zoning enforcement officer know about it. And, uh, you know, kind of pursue those channels and, you know, won't tell you what to do if that doesn't get attention, you know, other than, you know, he reports to, to that, to the town manager. So, you know, if, if that doesn't seem to work, that, that would be the, the next level of recourse. But basically, um, you know, if someone is violating the conditions and they're, you know, verifiably violating the conditions and routinely violating the conditions, you know, don't just stew in silence, you know, let the town know, because, you know, otherwise we would have no way of knowing.
Right. No, that we're, we're all very, very tight-knit community, very vigilant about what goes on in our neighborhood, so I don't think that would be an issue. I just have the concern, I don't know. It's, it's, it's tough. It's, I, I like the ideas that they brought forth to try to remedy it, but at the same time, it's still, it's still so close to our, you know, the crossings. It just concerns me that, you know, when they do have a storm, if we can, you know, can we limit the amount, the hours that they're in operation when they're there?
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, I think the nature of the business makes it a little more difficult, because they have to respond when there's an emergency and you can't guarantee that's nine to five.
Which we witnessed last night, because they had, they had one, the, there wasn't that they're making noise, but they had a truck. They had something going on in the yard. But, I mean, there was over eighteen thousand people without electricity last night, so I can understand.
Right, exactly.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you.
No, thank you. Uh, anyone else in the public wanting to comment on this application? Anyone else? If not, I guess bring it back to the commission. And the applicant, um, you know, based on the, the comments from the public, are there any additional items that the commission would like to pursue with the applicant? Peter, do you have any thoughts on additional screening? I guess it would be on the east side where the trailer is, what the, you know, any kind of feasible way to improve the screening there? You know, short of installing sixty-foot trees?
I mean, there, there are some, you know, fabric, materials, green fabric screening, that, um, I think as long as they have, um, you know, uh, wind holes, um, can potentially do the job. You know, fencing over, you know, eight feet in height has to be specifically engineered. And, you know, I'm not sure that's the, the solution, and, and it's only going to be eight feet, you know, or so. So there may be some, uh, provisions like that that could be installed. But even, and, you know, the contractor obviously has access to telephone poles, so, he, he's got, got that going for him so that he could maybe, maybe do something. There's some probably select areas. Obviously, it's also, you know, winter time and, you know, there's no leaves on the trees, and obviously that doesn't, uh, doesn't help either. So, um, the other thing, and, and I, I did have this conversation with the contractor, and he can obviously speak for himself. This may be a, um, short-term, um, use of this property. They are subject to, um, you know, the, the bidding process of the, um, parent company that hires them. Uh, and that happens, you know, I don't know if it's annually or every other year. I think it's up again in July. So if they don't get the contract, then obviously they have no need for using the yard. So, um, I don't know if that was discussed earlier or not, but, um, so I think that's a, another reason, you know, that things like paving and, you know, some of the more permanent improvements may not be necessarily warranted in this case. So maybe some, some more temporary measures, um, should be, should be considered. But there are a bunch of other conditions that the applicant testified to that I think need to be factored in uh, as conditions. And, um, we talked about the number of trucks. We talked about the town engineer's, uh, conditions. We talked about moving the, you know, the bucket trucks and the trailer into different areas on the property. Moving the, uh, portable toilets and also screening those with some sort of fencing. You may also want to, given the potentially short-term nature of this tenant, is attach a timeframe so that in a year or two, um, the permit would expire. The applicant could come back in and seek an extension of it, but at that point, you could assess whether he's been complying with the various terms and conditions and, uh, make another decision at that time as to whether they've, you know, been a good neighbor and have done the things that, um, you expected them to do. So that would be another, uh, possible condition. Uh, I would not advise that you make the permit specific to this tenant, but maybe have a timeframe so that can be reviewed again, um, in, in short order.
Peter, George, uh, here. Can we require, I'd like to at least discuss this, require active maintenance of the lot surface by an applicant?
Uh, yeah, I think we, we have not, we have.
Considering this is not a paved service.
Yes. Yeah, this is different than you would normally do, so I don't.
You got to get used to this kind of thing. I like to discuss it during the, at some point in the meeting here.
Yeah, I, I mean, uh, filling and, you know, regrading the lot as, as, um, as, is warranted.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's one of the things where you're trying to keep it pervious. You want it to, to function.
Yeah, I think, um, I think we can define like, uh, a rectangle of area that's like the heavily trafficked area and the most visual from, uh, the most, uh, obvious from the roadway. Like, you can do a twenty by forty piece of that entrance, entryway. Hog out all that material and put in some, some clean base like that. Is probably not going to be what you have out there already, but probably bring something in new. And just say that, uh, you know, coordinate maybe with the town engineer and say it's got to be at least eight inches thick. You got a lot of heavily traveled. Heavy vehicles going in there and it's important to do the the high-traffic area, not necessarily important to do the whole lot, especially. Given what Peter just said about the sort of transient nature of the business.
Yeah, I mean, ironically, if you look at the aerial photographs, you can pretty well see where the work needs to be done because there are holes full of water.
Yeah, yeah, and it's obvious. It's the high-traffic area and, you know, so if you did a, the width of the opening looks to be about. Twenty, twenty-five feet, something like that, and then you just say like forty feet in. Um, and you're then you're done like and and then that. Will get rid of any of that rutting and, you know, any of the other rutting that happens inside the lot, that's their business as long as it's not visual. From the room, visible from the room.
All right, anybody else on the commission have any brilliant insights before we think about closing the public hearing?
You just say that that was a brilliant insight?
Said any other brilliant insights in addition to yours?
I'm gonna go ahead and assume that you just called me brilliant right now.
Yeah, put that in the minutes.
Let the record reflect.
Yeah.
I heard that.
All right. Anybody else? Uh, if not, does the applicant have any final comments or suggestions or? You've you've sort of heard the direction that this is going. Are there any the things that we have discussed that are? Concerning to you that you'd like to talk about?
Um, as far uh, just a couple of points, I guess, with the the as far as the lot, uh, I actually spoke with the this the superintendent or property manager today. And uh, we were on board with moving forward and and assessing that lot as far as the potholes and. And regrading and redressing up the the surface. So that is in the works. We have our our own equipment to do so. The property owner has his own equipment to do so, and we're gonna work together. To get that done while we work on the uh. Uh, or the recommended uh installation of the the perimeter natural drain. The name of it is skipping my my mind, but uh, but drainage around the perimeter of the lot as well as 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 redressing the surface. Um, my only concern is I know it's a big question with everyone is the amount of vehicles. But a perfect example that arose, yeah, this is yesterday was the storm is is it for limited uh. Uh, if if that is a clause on this. As far as how many vehicles, I would definitely like. To at least, or I guess it's up up to the the commission to decide, but if there's a storm situation like that, it's 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 definitely a higher priority of the area to have vehicles. It's not every day, but. For example, as as in last night, um, and the two nights before, I mean, we have guys working twenty-four hours a day, um, that cycle in and out. And it does bring a lot more vehicles to the site. So I guess that's just something to think about as far as limiting the amount of vehicles that. And maybe to norm the normal day versus is versus a storm day when there's thousands of outages in the area.
Well, I guess just so that, you know, you can you can help us evaluate that. I mean, how many? I guess we're talking about trucks, but we're also talking about passenger vehicles. Um, you said six, seven, eight trucks. Maybe ten. How many passenger vehicles on a normal day versus versus a storm day? Is it basically a one-to-one equivalency?
Yes. Yes, as as far as is personal vehicles versus is equipment right now due to do the uh, the surrounding uh. Our coronavirus regulations and rules throughout the company were limited and through our ever-source were limited to one person per vehicle. Um, a company vehicle, so it's it would be a one-to-one ratio for large truck to to small truck. Or maybe even less because some of the guys have their own uh work pickup trucks that come and go, but they don't stay there. You might see those during the day if they're in the office or doing paperwork in their their personal truck. But as far as large vehicles, one-to-one ratio in this, the the ten number that we talked about or six to eight, ten. That's that would be a regular operation. I know that that the photos I took that day, everyone except one was gone. And then in a storm situation, you you could be talking about ten to fifteen vehicles. Uh, but a regular day basis is this is around six to eight trucks.
Okay.
To operate, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, like I said at the beginning and and last time, it was just frankly, I thought it was important to have an order of magnitude so that, you know. It it wasn't unlimited.
Understood, understood. And I know like we we also discuss it, just the different. It's and and I hate that I can't give you an exact answer of what's gonna go because it it is such a variable. On on how the situation or the day, if we get a storm twice a month or we don't get one for six months, it's 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 greatly differs.
It's why they call them emergencies.
Exactly.
Okay, Tom? Tom, did you have something?
No.
Okay, thanks. All right. Anyone else on the commission have anything before we close the public here? If not, is there a motion?
Motion so made, Mr. Chairman, George.
All right, George made a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ryan. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I'm gonna abstain, Rich, and I'm not gonna participate in the deliberation on this matter.
Okay, that was Joe Hammer abstaining from the vote and not participating in the deliberations. Does someone want to make a motion to start discussion? Or does someone want to start?
A motion to approve this application. Is that what you want, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I mean, just so that we have a motion on the floor to discuss.
Right. So made. I I conditions or anything? I'll leave that up to a discussion point at some time.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. All right.
And if if we're gonna add anything for um. Reinforcing any of the pavement structure or the gravel structure as it is. Uh, are we go, should we leave that up to the town engineer? Should we have them? Yeah, okay. So I I would I would add that as a stipulation that um, to work with the work with the town officials for. An appropriate size and uh. Thickness, depth of um, previous base gravel, whatever they're gonna end up using.
Okay. Um, could someone second the motion first and then we'll.
Oh. I'll second it.
Okay. All right, motion made by George, seconded by Ryan. Ryan suggested the first stipulation being work with the town engineer on the. Improvement of the entrance areas of the parking lot. Uh, with respect to the. Appropriate subbase.
And continued. Maintenance of it. You want that another item?
Well, that's the point is that the the maintenance will just be. Like few and far between if they're actually do a depth. Of of gravel that is in, you know, compacted properly and like the the town is aware of it, so.
It should hold up.
If you do, if you do it right, you're not gonna be running into it every year.
Yeah. Um, Peter, when we were before we closed the hearing, you you had kind of a. A list of some of the items that were from your memo and from Derek's that. Could you sort of go through those as additional stipulations? If I, I had a total of ten uh potential conditions, the first being um, per the town engineer's email. Regarding the infiltration trends around the perimeter of fencing. Number two was the uh condition on the pavement uh maintenance and uh sub- substructure to satisfaction of the town engineer as Ryan mentioned. Uh, number three is whether you want to attach a timeframe uh under which the permit might expire and have to be renewed. Uh, number four, um, the recommendation that the portable.
Peter, would you stop right there? What that that condition about length, uh, what do you recommend?
Um, I I'm I'm not recommending anything. Um, probably just. Just want to discuss it, how how soon you want them to come back. Um, maybe the maybe the end of um. The end of twenty-one.
Fine. Yeah, I mean, I I think that makes sense. We can have it for a one-year term that we can extend administratively if there have been no.
Yep.
Violations of the conditions.
So number four was the uh condition on the portable toilets being relocated and screened. Number five was the proposed relocation of the trucks within the compound. Number six was the condition on the bucket arms being uh lower to the extent uh practicable. Number seven was relocating the trailer as was testified to by the applicant. Number eight uh was the maximum number of of trucks in a typical daily operation of ten with a um, an exception provision. Uh, related to uh storm-related uh activity. Obviously, that has to go above ten. Uh, number nine.
Wait, wait, repeat that again for me.
Sure. Establishing a a typical daily maximum of ten trucks using the yard under normal, you know, uh, daily conditions. However, with the understanding that there are going to be uh periods of time uh during storm-related activities where the number. Will have to go beyond that uh for for short periods of time.
Okay, that's good. Fine, thank you.
Number nine, that the uh trucks are parked within the compound uh to minimize. Uh, the need for um, reverse backing up motions that activate the the safety uh, um, safety warning devices. And then number ten, uh, that the applicant work with town staff to come up with a um. Uh, possible screening uh solution to minimize the impact on the neighboring property. So those were the ten.
Crash outside the fence.
I think, as I said earlier, the those are probably not conditions for the applicant, but maybe as a secondary. You know, after after we vote on this, that um, staff, staff will pass that on.
Okay. I guess just to be clear on your screening, you're we're talking about both on the north side, possibly making the fence taller to block headlights. And on the east side, if feasible to block view of the larger trailer. Is that what you meant?
Um, certainly, certainly can cover all of that.
No, I I just didn't know what you had in mind and those were some.
I'm not sure how you're gonna. Lock um, the view into the compound from um Russell Road so that you don't see the trailers and the trucks. The elevation is higher and. I, yeah, I I don't know. I I I think it uh the condition on the screening for the neighboring property with the headlights and through the trees can probably be. Uh, more easily addressed than trying to make, you know, the equipment, the trailer, the trucks um. Invisible from the street if that's what the intent um is. I I don't know that.
I was thinking in the other direction from the houses down the hill.
Oh, okay. Um.
I agree. I agree with you, Peter, that viewing in there from Russell Road, that's difficult to.
Yes.
Figure out how to.
Yeah, I I don't know how to address that, given the you can't you can't build a fence high enough to to do that. But yeah, Rich, the other, yeah, from the other, from the. From the crossing um. Properties is really what I was. Trying to to address.
Okay, yeah, I mean, and and the only thought I had on view from Russell Road was to um, you know. Close the gates when it's not in use.
Yeah, I I think that's reasonable.
Okay. Good. Yeah, I mean, that that was pretty much everything I I had. Does anyone else on the commission have any comments on any of these stipulations or ideas for the modifications or additions? You want to be specific, Mr. Chairman, on the bucket heights or not? No.
No, I mean, I I don't, I don't think that, I mean, I I wouldn't pretend to know.
I wouldn't either, and I'm not gonna, I'm just asking, do we want to? And I don't think so, but.
No, I mean, the applicant testified that they were going to, you know, basically lower them as low as they can be and still. You know, ensure that they're not gonna have all of the contents stolen.
I just want to say in the wintertime, which is now with no trees, no leaves on those trees. This is what you see from the units at the top of the hill. There's no question, those higher buckets, so.
Yeah, and and you see them from the lower units too.
Doesn't cover it as it exists, so.
Yeah.
That's what it's all about.
Yeah, I mean, it it looked like a carnival with like all the, you know, the Ferris wheels being installed and that kind of thing. I mean, I I think that's the. You know, the visual image that we're trying to mitigate here. Okay, um, anyone else? If not, any further discussion? All right, that I guess, um, as long as everybody understands what it is that we're voting on. Proving the application with the stipulations that have been discussed. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Joe abstained.
Yeah.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you to the neighbors for remaining vigilant. You know, don't want you to feel ignored or isolated, but uh. Unfortunately, we only see you every once in a while and it's.
We do.
In response to something rather than.
Hey, Peter, when are we going back to regular meetings? Do you hear anything?
Twenty twenty-two. Yeah. As good as as ours, so for the foreseeable future.
Come on, George, don't you like this? No, and I can't even get in the town hall to bother these guys and keep them from working. That's why they have that big warning sign and the security at the front desk is.
That's why they're saying twenty twenty-two, George.
Yeah, if it weren't for you, we'd all be.
We'd all already be there.
All right. Uh, next item, public hearing application twenty sixty twenty Z, Weatherfield Retail LLC seeking a special permit in accordance with sections. Five-two F-two and five-two F-three for a drive-through restaurant and associated site improvements at one forty Silas Dean Highway. Uh, is there, Megan, are you presenting on behalf of the applicant?
I am. Good evening. Uh, for the record, my name is Megan Hope. I'm an attorney with Alter and Pearson in Glastonbury. Uh, here tonight with me, you will be hearing from uh probably Peter La Pointe. He's the representative for the property owner. Our project engineer Dana Steele is also here. We also have our architect, Robert Grimaldi, and then I believe I saw um Scott Haskus on here as well. Um, so. That's our team. So I did prepare a PowerPoint presentation. Um. Peter, are you able to enable me to uh share my screen?
Bring and hold it up to the camera.
Um, let's see, let's, I don't know if I need to do anything on my end. Can you can you try on your end and see if um, it allows you to do that?
Yeah, it says that the host has disabled screen sharing.
Uh, let me see, not something I've done before, but if you want to, anyone has any guidance for me to do that screen sharing function? Uh, Denise is actually calling me, so. Answer, so. Hey.
What'd you do without her, Peter? Yeah, I had to do the screen sharing at a meeting a couple of weeks ago. It was not a pretty scene.
I made my mouse very big, so it's a great pointer about so hopefully we can get this.
Yep.
Um, someone else couldn't do it. They sent me an email with twenty PDFs in it that I had to open individually and then, you know, warn. and then, you know, one at a time, share my screen with them.
Yeah.
Meg, give it a shot now, see if it works.
Excellent.
Okay.
It's working.
Good.
Okay. Everybody see that?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, so, again, as I mentioned, this application is for a special permit for a drive-through restaurant and also a restaurant without door dining. Our proposed tenant is Popeyes Louisiana Kitchen. The property owner, Weathersfield Retail LLC, is in a contract with them, so they are a real tenant. They've already spent a considerable amount of money on the proposed elevations and signage package that they've submitted to the town. The slide that I'm showing now is an aerial view of the site. The site is the Jordan Lane Shopping Center. It is on the southeast corner of Jordan Lane, which runs east-west, and the Silas Dean Highway, which runs north-south. The whole site is about 10.6 acres, located in the general business zone. Our proposed application, or the proposed uses for the application are permitted after the issuance of a special permit. The shopping center was constructed, constructed in the 60s. It has three entrances, it has an unsignaled intersection on Silas Dean, a signalized intersection, which is a little off this picture, down across from Cumberland Road, and then another unsignaled intersection up here at Jordan Lane. We're not proposing to touch any of those access points as part of this application, so all those points will remain the same. There is a utility easement in this easterly portion of the site. And I'll go on down to the next slide, which just shows a close-up of the area that we're proposing to redevelop. So everything I've outlined here in yellow is the area that we are going to disturb as part of this application. It's about 30,000 square feet, so 0.68 acres. As you can see, it abuts Jordan Lane. Currently, there's pavement that pretty much goes right up to the property line. And as you'll see in the next slide, we're actually able to create some green space in this area. So we definitely think it's gonna be an enhancement from what's there now. This area is almost entirely paved, as you can see from this aerial photo. Back in the late 90s, we, the property did receive approval for a 6,600-square-foot pharmacy with drive-through. That pharmacy was never constructed, but a lot of the underground utilities were already put in place. So we do have some underground infrastructure that's already been taken care of, so that should make the construction process somewhat more streamlined. So what I have now on the screen is our proposed site plan. I was gonna turn it over to our engineer Dana Steele so that he can talk you through the site plan. Dana, do you want me to continue to point while you talk? Does that work?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Megan. For the record, Dana Steele, professional engineer with JR Russo and Associates, our offices at 1 Shoham Road in East Windsor. And we prepared this site plan that you see before you for this application, and is gonna go through it briefly to explain what's, what's being proposed. You can see that the restaurant is in the center of the, of the pavement area, and there is a drive-through lane that runs around the perimeter of the building, and it runs in a counterclockwise direction so that the driver ends up on the drive-through window side. So as you're, as you're accessing this site, if you're coming from Jordan Lane, there is an access off of Jordan Lane that you can take, if you turn into that, that driveway, you can head south and, and then take a right, go by the, the north end of the existing building, and you'll come to an intersection where you can then turn right again. And then you can either park on the left-hand side and access the, the building by walking across the driveway, or if you want to go to the drive-through lane, you turn right. There's angle parking all around the perimeter of the drive-through lane as well. That's one-way parking. You can see by those bold arrows there that that's the direction of flow. So it makes for inefficient traffic flow around the building. If you don't find any spaces, you can easily keep going around the building, and, and if need be, you can even overflow to the other side of the island, to the west of the development. There's existing parking there. One of the comments that was raised by your engineer was suggesting to add a sidewalk in that island between the existing parking and our new areas. We've added that short little connector. We also eliminated one of the parking spaces with striping on both sides of that sidewalk so that you can get from one side of the island to the other easily. We, in response to a design review, we have looked at various locations for the accessible parking spaces. Originally, we had them on the, the west side of the drive-through lane, I mean, of the access drive, and we've moved them in response to design review closer to the front door in the angled parking spaces. So the first two angled spaces are now accessible parking spaces with the appropriate signage and a, in a crosswalk to get from the spaces to, to the handicap ramp and into the front door, which is on the south side of the building. The, the plan does show some additional landscape islands, and when we, maybe if we move on to the, to the next sheet, the next sheet, this is a calculation sheet that I provided for impervious coverage. As, as Megan indicated, we are decreasing the impervious coverage for the site, more green, less pavement. You can see the areas that are more green, that are in green, and the areas where, that are currently green, that we're, that we're making impervious are in, are in the red. So those areas are being paved, the other areas are being removed, and it's a net increase in green space for the site. And, and so we are improving the overall, I think, aesthetics of the site. We're improving runoff, reducing the amount of runoff, we're improving water quality with less impervious surfaces. So overall, from a, from an engineering standpoint, this is, this is, we're moving in the right direction for the site. And I believe that your, your town engineer has reviewed this, and it is, is in agreement with that. He does have some comments that he'd like us to address. Most of them we have actually already addressed, but there's a few that we still need to finalize with him. But the, one, one thing I wanted just to note briefly about this, this layout plan is there, your regulations look for landscape islands at the end of every parking area, and we have one area in the southwest, I'm sorry, the southeast corner of our development area that I'm showing as painted striped. The reason for that is twofold. First of all, there's an existing catch basin, which is that little square just, just below the, the painted island that all this site wants to drain towards, and so if I put an island there, it's gonna block the flow to that catch basin. Secondly, and probably more significantly, because there's ways to work around that, but more significantly is that particular area is within the flood zone. So this, this area is partially in the flood zone, the building is not in the flood zone, but the entrance to the site of Jordan Lane there is below the 100-year flood elevation. Not the entire driveway, but that, that intersection to the, just to the southeast of where Megan's pointing is, is in the flood lane, and it encroaches into that, into that landscape island area. So if I were to create a curved island there, it would reduce the flood storage. It may seem like it's a pretty minimal increase, but we're not allowed to increase it at all. And so we did not open a curved island there. So if we need a waiver for that, we are requesting that, that, that waiver for that because of flood management, for flood management reasons, to have an efficient and minimal impact to the flood, flood zone. The, the actual net result of this project is an increase in flood storage. So we do, we were able to, to improve the site in regard to flooding as well. So that's really the direction that we think we should be going, trying to make it better, not, not just keep it the same, but make, try to make it a little better, and that's what we've done. So I think that's it for, for that, that sheet. And the next one, is it the landscaping, Megan? Okay, so just, I guess, before I hand it over to Megan, Megan's gonna talk about the landscaping a little bit. I just want to just, just note, as Megan said, the utilities are, have already been piped to this, this area, but we'll be connecting sanitary sewer, we'll be connecting a grease trap for the restaurant into the sewer. We have a water, city water and a storm drainage system. We're providing roof infiltration for the, the roof runoff. That was one of the comments from the engineer that I still need to coordinate with him. Basically, the issue, he's concerned that, that what I have for the roof infiltration will not make it, will not all make it into the stone beneath the perforated pipe. And he, he thinks that, that the water will not go through the perforations quickly enough, and that some water will bypass the infiltration system. So I'm gonna work with him on coming up with a, a minor tweak to the, to the configuration of that detail, provide what he's suggesting, some underground chambers to, to resolve that problem. But that's a, something that, we, when we were at Wetlands previously, they were comfortable making that a condition of approval. Hopefully, you will be as well, just to respond, incorporating the town engineer's comments as conditions of approval, and we would be agreeable to that. There is a dumpster area as well. I think Megan's gonna talk about the enclosure a little bit. And, and I know your, your planner had some comments about possibly relocating that dumpster, and, and I think maybe Megan's gonna get into that as, as well, or I can address it further if need be. But the, the other factor for storm drainage, just wanted to bring to your attention, and this was really highlighted in our Wetland application, but just so you're aware, town engineer is also required us to provide additional water quality treatment. Currently, this site has been here a while, it predates some of the, the modern environmental regulations. And so we're gonna be bringing this up to, up, up to standards by providing some treatment for the water before, before it discharged to the ditch along the eastern property line. So, so we're doing a number of things, spending money in this site to, to make it better, to make it more modern, to bring it up to current standards, and we hope that you'll view this application favorably. I think that, if you want to take it from there, Megan?
That sounds good. Thank you, Dana. So just to briefly go over the, the landscaping plan, we are adding street trees along Jordan Lane. Drak did ask us to incorporate some more evergreen plants into the plan so that there was some interest during the winter months. So we did add that specifically in this front island as well. And then we also have plantings along the whole sort of periphery of our developed area. We did receive a comment in Peter's memo regarding looking at relocating the dumpster enclosure. The dumpster enclosure is located right here. I'm circling it with, with my mouse, and I'm just gonna jump to the next slide to show the detail. It is eight feet, six inches tall. It's going to have solid walls on the back, on the backside and the two sides, and then the front will be metal, metal frames with wood on the front of that. We did speak with Popeyes about possibly relocating the dumpster, and I'm just gonna go back to the aerial photo that I have, or maybe this one is better. Trying to group it with some of the other dumpsters that are located on the site, and Popeyes just felt that it was too far of a walk for their employees, especially during times of the year when it's dark at night or in the winter when there's a lot of snow on the ground. So we felt that it was more appropriate to keep it where we had proposed it. And so today, we did have the team dress it up a little bit more with some more landscaping. So we've added arborvitae's along these two sides, as I'm pointing, and also an additional zalkova deciduous tree as well. As Dana mentioned, we are looking for some waiver requests for landscaping. We are unable to get an island in this location, so we're asking a waiver for that. And then we do not have, we're required to have a landscape island in this row here because we have more than 10 cars. We can't add an island there because if we take it up with landscaping, we fall below the required parking, which we just meet right now. So those are the two portions of the landscaping regulation that we're looking for a waiver to be granted on. Okay, so did that? So Scott, are you here? See here? Yes, Scott, all right, I'm gonna have Scott discuss the traffic briefly. He did submit a report, which went out in the packets. Take it away, Scott.
Everybody hear me?
Yep, I can hear you.
Great. Good evening. My name is Scott Haskins. I am a traffic engineer consultant on the project. I prepared a letter dated November 18th, 2020, which is part of your package. We're asked to take a look at the traffic impacts here. Unfortunately, due to the COVID situation, doing traffic counts on the existing roadways was not appropriate at this time, as it wouldn't have given us appropriate numbers. But in our report, we did.
Chairman, I can't hear him too well. Maybe it's me with my hearing, I don't know.
No, it's pretty quiet.
Yeah, Scott, can you get a little bit louder?
Which one of your microphones is taken? Does it, does it better?
Hey, you gotta take care of us old guys.
Hey, I'm one of us old guys, so, all right.
Yeah, that seems better.
That's better.
Okay. Yes, we were asked to take a look at the traffic impacts of the proposed development. I was saying, because of the COVID situation, doing current counts was not an option for us. But in our report, we did present to you traffic volume counts from the Connecticut Department of Transportation, both for the Silas Dean Highway and for Jordan Lane. If you look at the tables in the report, you can see the traffic volumes presented there.
Those are 2017 volumes?
Those are the latest volumes available from Condat, and I believe they are the.
2018.
One of them was October 2018, and the other one was October 2018. Yes, so they're 2018 counts. But more significantly, because this site is the area, the area we're looking to develop.
Scott.
You're going in and out.
Yeah, you're going in and out, Scott.
I'm going in and out.
Yeah, that sounds good. Don't move.
Okay. The, the, the traffic impacts of this particular development would be the difference in the pharmacy.
Sorry, I have a hard time, man.
Yeah, Scott.
I'm breaking up.
I, I, I don't know what to do.
You're good now.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll just, we'll, we'll try it that way. I'll be concise then, so that we don't break out as, up as much. Let me get to the bottom line then. We expect that this proposed restaurant will generate about 126 trips during the afternoon peak hour and 134 trips during the Saturday peak hour, and that represents an increase of about 58 trips and 76 trips respectively. And considering we have three points of access to the development, when you distribute that traffic to the roadway network, we're looking at increased traffic in the range of 12 trips at any one particular movement, or 25 or 30 trips at any one particular intersection. So it's, it's our opinion, these increase in traffic is relatively minor, and there would be no disruption or degradation in the traffic levels of service at, at these intersections. We do have to apply, and we have applied, to the Office of the State Traffic Administration because this site operates under a certificate, and we'll, we'll be looking for an approval from that, that organization as well. I'll leave it at that, because I'm breaking up, and if the commission has any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
Yeah, I do. How do you feel about the traffic going around the north end of the shopping center and conflicting with your outgoing traffic going to the exit to Jordan Lane? There's a right and a left, and it's, and you're conflicting in front of Price Right and that end of the shopping center, the traffic there. Do you find that an issue or a problem?
I don't see it as a particular problem. It, it is the historic traffic pattern on the site.
Yeah, without this restaurant.
True, that's true.
That wait a minute, hold it. I'll say this. I don't want to argue with you, but I've been around this town for too long and that and I even probably approved this shopping center. But the trouble is that is does have some conflict with the outgoing traffic from your site. And you do you see anything up here at the, you know, north west corner of the shopping center with your traffic? And the difficulties of getting through there?
Well, the restaurant generates about two trips per minute, which is on average during the peak hour, which is about one trip every 30 seconds. And that's a relatively low volume of traffic. I have not done a capacity analysis of that unsignalized intersection in front of the shopping center the lower left hand corner of the plan.
Sorry.
Sorry. That one there. Yeah, we're looking, you know, the shopping center probably has a trip generation of about 200 trips an hour. Again, over three different driveways. The restaurant is in the range of 120 trips an hour. So we're looking at, you know, eight to 10 vehicles a minute, perhaps going through that intersection. Not a particularly high volume of traffic. So I don't expect it'll be any any particular difficulties of traffic moving through that location.
Are you going to Jordan Lady making a left? Anything out there? No problem.
Making a left out of Jordan Lane? Since we didn't have recent traffic counts, I didn't do an analysis, but based on the traffic volumes that were, you know, if if the shopping center has 40% of its traffic goes out that driveway, the driveway should operate at the official levels of service.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I I I have a question here. Mike, Mike Vera here. As far as like the dumpster location goes, if I'm looking at this, like the traffic plan correctly, now the direction wish a truck would have to come to pick up the dumpsters or to empty the dumpsters would be going against the traffic pattern that you guys have planned. Is that is that correct? Am I looking at this correctly? You know, the way the dumpsters are facing?
Yes.
Good Dana or Dana or Peter, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, he is. He is correct. The the traffic, the truck picking up the trash would have to go against the flow. And our expectation, our understanding is that the trucks will be scheduled before the restaurant opens. So that going against the drive through flow or that exit lane flow is not going to be a problem.
Because I was just kind of kind of curious there because I wasn't originally. I mean, I kind of understand Popeyes position with, you know, it being in close proximity to the restaurant itself and and their need, you know, for their employees to walk with the trash. I was just kind of thinking, you know, practically, you know, it kind of looks like it's set up, you know, with the, you know, the amount of parking spaces and just the traffic pattern and its proximity to the highway. I was just kind of thinking, you know, maybe it's kind of more of a drive through driven, you know, pattern here and, you know, if, you know, that that could create an issue. I don't know. Just just bringing that up. Thank you.
Yeah, we did discuss that with the tenant. They're aware that it's going to have to be an early morning pickup. That's not a problem for them or the trash haulers. We have that other locations. And the dumpster location, the dumpster enclosure location was in part driven by the the need to queue the truck up. He needs at least 40 feet to line up straight to pick up those those dumpsters. So it worked perfectly.
Great, thank you. And it has this situation at many other locations.
Yes.
Couple of questions, couple of mostly traffic related questions. The did we look at the queuing for the left hand going southbound on 99? That storage length for the left hand turn coming from 99 into the like the main Price Right entrance. There's that queue length and then there's the the left turn coming out of the north exit, taking the left out of there. Just just curious if you can discuss a little bit more like the traffic pattern for how many people are leaving the north and going to 15? So they have to cross one, two, three lanes in order to get into that other queue. Sometimes that queue might back up. I've I've been there before. And then one other question, was there coordination with the with Price Right at all? Because you're going to end up seeing more traffic, like through traffic, going past the front of Price Right, using it as like sort of a cut through in order to to get to the the northern end of the lot. So you're introducing a lot of traffic in a pedestrian area. So I was just curious if if Price Right or, you know, the overall owner of the property had any thoughts on, you know, sometimes they do like a mid block opening in that Long Island in the entryway, just to get some of that traffic out of the way of the pedestrians and connect them up. So I don't know, just curious if any, if there's any discussion to be had on that. But overall, I I realize there isn't really a, this isn't like a huge trip generator. This isn't something that's going to increase to an already, it is like an already congested intersection. I just had a couple of questions on there's so there's the left hand out of 99 to get into the main Price Right. There's the left hand coming out of the northern section to go to 15. And then generally the like any price right coordination, any conversations that were had there for for folks who are heading south on 99 and then need to cut across the the front of a parking, parking, the front of a grocery store, which isn't always the most fun road to travel.
Well, Scott Hesketh, unfortunately, since we couldn't do turning boop and counts at the intersection and relying on the automated counts from DOT, I would have been estimating turn volumes and I, you know, I could have taken educated educated guess, but it would have been just that guess. So doing an analysis to determine how long the queue length would be by adding a handful of cars to it, we would not have learned anything valuable in that analysis because I could have been off by 30 or 40% with the numbers. So we we did not do that kind of analysis again because of the COVID situation. We are projecting maybe 14 to 18 left turns at the intersection, which is again is about one every three minutes. So the the increase in queue wouldn't be substantial at that location. Maybe one third to half of those cars would come off the the ramp and cut across traffic. Not a significant number. It's a but so I I didn't specifically analyze that. The number wasn't very huge and it it seemed to be a major concern. In terms of traffic cutting across the front of the site, I'm going to rely on Peter to talk about any discussions he's had with the with the other tenants. But again, we're projecting, you know, maybe 18 to 20 vehicles an hour across the frontage of that site, accessing the other two driveways. You know, it is a shopping center. People entering from one side, going to a tenant on the other side do use that as a a drive aisle. I'm not aware of any complaints in terms of conflicts in that area currently. So I I don't expect it to be exacerbated much. And your third question was turning left out of this shopping center and going to then making the right onto 15. Again, capacity analysis haven't been done because of the the lack of available count data. But again, the the volume of traffic from the shopping center is is not significantly different than what was reviewed and approved for previous applications. And we're adding not very much to it. So I anticipate that levels of service be acceptable at those locations.
Yeah, like I said, I I didn't really anticipate this being like a huge traffic generator. I'm just curious about those three items.
I wish I had more information for you, but I haven't been able to do a traffic count and well, since January of this year, so.
Excuse me, George Oecolier, has the does DOT review this kind of work with you or not?
Oster is going to do it.
Yes, this center operates under a major traffic generator certificate. So any change in use or any expansion requires further review by by the state.
And also have you taken into consideration there are significant vacancies in the southern part of the shopping center, of course, that aren't filled at the moment for vacant?
Yeah, when the when the Oster reviews these things in previous applications, they would have reviewed the trip generation for the entire site.
Right. This doesn't add much to it.
Doesn't add much to it. And our application again to them because we're only asking for a change of what was previously approved, we presented to them the difference in trip generation between the pharmacy and the fast food use dislocation.
Okay.
And that's what they'll be reviewing.
And they're they're going to review it?
It's it's it has been submitted and we have yet to receive any questions or comments from them.
What's that mean? I mean, I get you perfect. Your engineers can talk this way, but I'm not a traffic engineer, so I have to ask you further. What do you mean? If they haven't answered by now, will they probably?
They typically take between four to six weeks to make comments and
Are they slow now with the COVID thing?
They have slowed down with the COVID because no one's working in the DOT building at the moment. So they go one day a week to pick up things that have been submitted. And then they scan them and send them out to people to review. So it's a little bit slowed down, but we anticipate that we'll get something from them in the next two weeks or so.
And you don't expect it to be serious because of their, it's not a big traffic generator. Okay, is that right?
That's right. I don't expect it to because they generally they generally don't the different levels of review, we fall below the we're very low on it because of the small increase in traffic. So we I expect very little comment.
I I have another question. So I I mean, there is there is a popular draw to Popeyes. There isn't one already in town. Where is where is the closest one? I don't know if anyone has offhand answer to the next closest Popeyes.
Flatbush Avenue.
So I mean, I was just, I mean, I I just think of this lot, you know, historically, you know, the exit points of this lot, I guess my point is, you know, it's not, it's not the easiest lot to get out of. It's very easy to get into, not the easiest to get out of. I know you don't anticipate a lot of traffic. This is kind of this, that's where I'm kind of hung up on what I'm hung up on here.
Yeah, I mean, this is this is probably more than than I should tell you. But you know, the the two Popeyes closest to here, I think, are on Flatbush Avenue and Hartford. And that's a nightmare to get into because it's in the Walmart Plaza there. You know, with a couple of hairpin turns and, you know, significant kind of conflicting crossing traffic to get back onto the 84 exit. And the other one is on Spencer Street, just over the line into Manchester. And it shares its driveway with a with a motel and there's kind of a big long queue around it. And when you get to the end of there or the exit from the drive through, you're basically at the stoplight and you're at the mercy of all of the traffic coming out of the site. So, you know, frankly, I I agree that it's not ideal, but it's better than the other two that are, you know, within 10 miles of here as far as you know, kind of rigorous traffic movements to get in and out of a shopping center.
No, I mean, I I agree, Rich. You know, the the few that I've been to, I've had like the similar experience, but um, yeah. It's definitely an improvement, but um, yeah, okay, thank you.
All right. Do we have any other traffic questions? Would you want me to move on for now?
No, I think that's enough for now.
Okay. All right, so we're going to move into the architectural plans before I have our architect, Robert jump into the presentation. I did just wanted to put on the screen one of the floor plan. So the the south side of the building, which faces kind of interior to the site, is on the bottom of the screen here. It's our main entrance side, which I'm highlighting here with this red arrow. When you walk in, straight ahead is the sales area. You have your dining area to the front or the Silas Dean side of the building, rather, the west side. And of course, outside the dining room is our outdoor patio, which we have. And then in the back, you're seeing the drive through area, which is on that north side of the building and all the storage and prep rooms are also in the rear and we have access out the rear of the building, that east side for deliveries, et cetera. So I'm going to go down to the next slide, which is Robert's going to go through. And I just did want to note, we finished up with Drak this afternoon. They actually held a special meeting for us today at noon. They did approve our revised plans. They had asked us to revise some of the materials that we had showed originally. Specifically, they wanted us to eliminate EFS from the building. So Popeyes was able to rework their design and Robert can discuss some of the things that we ended up changing and Drak did approve the revised plans, which are in the PowerPoint. So Robert, do you want to go through the elevations?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your time this evening. This building and this footprint are of the newest prototype that Popeyes has. As Megan mentioned, we made changes, significant changes to the finishes already on the building. Prior to Drax comments, we had a building that was 80% EFS and just two areas accented with brick, which were the drive through and the entrance, the side entrance. And then the front was has the wood siding underneath the window area. But after their comments and reviewing some things, we also, as I said, this is the newest prototype for Popeyes there. The prototype is evolving slightly as we go along. We're tweaking things. So there's a group of us that also work with the designers in Popeyes. And one of the things we all weren't very comfortable with was the wainscoting going right down to the soil in EFS. And they just approved before Thanksgiving that we could change that out to brick. And they actually substituted a actual brick with a gray brick finish rather than painting it brick because nobody wanted to do that. It's a maintenance nightmare. So this is actually the first building that we know of that is getting the full brick wainscoting. So the entire perimeter of the building will be brick wainscoting and it'll be gray except for the standard brick, as I previously mentioned, by the drive through and the entrance, which will be the red brick. I believe we have a picture in the deck later we could show you. The other change that we did per their request was changing the EFS to a hardy panel, a white hardy panel clapboard. So it's your normal six inch exposure clapboard, but it is a hardy panel, which is prefinished in the white color, which is the color scheme they wanted. And it'll be trimmed out with hardy trim. All these materials are no maintenance. They don't need to be painted. They need to be cleaned. They need to be installed correctly, which there's a specific reason and details that we have to incorporate. But this is a very low maintenance building. Again, as far as prototype goes, we'll be bringing you the latest and greatest. And thanks to your review committee, it's updated to hopefully, as they agreed, hopefully you agree, to be more in kind with other properties you'll find in your area. Inside, every store gets decorated and has an interior layout that's sent off to their interior seating and decor. They're all pretty much the same. They get tweaked slightly just for layout and coordination, but But that is all so getting going through a whole new prototype process and is updated. So if you've guys seen any Popeyes that are out there built in the last few years, these will be updated from that. It's just lucky twenty twenty is the year that they were changing everything. This is the drive through elevation, so that large brick spans that you see in the center will be the red brick. The drive through window will have a awning over it. And towards the right hand side of your screen is. Towards the entrance, and you'll have your gray brick Wayne's coating, you'll have the. Clapboard above it, and you see the signage on the front tower. Towards the back of the building, you have, again, the brick Wayne's coating, the. Excuse me, hardy panel clapboard and their traditional Popeyes shutters. That are their decorative shutters on the building. If you go to the next slide, I think you have the, this is the back, again, not too impressive. The cooler box is finished to match the building, so it'll be a white grayish. Pre-fa- pre-finished metal finish of the cooler box. All the roof. Roof drains will be piped in and collected, as the engineer previously indicated. And you could see the, again, the two brick elements, the drive through and the entrance, and of course, the. Brick Wayne's coating by the back door, the little fenced in area right by the back door. Outside of the building, we keep the CO tanks and the grease recovery tanks. Which are all hard piped and connected, and. The the reason that for that is so that there isn't a kid with a mop bucket dragging a bucket of grease across your parking lot. Into a grease receptacle anywhere on the site, and all gets hard piped right in. A truck comes and takes the grease, connects to it and sucks it right out of the tank. Eliminating possible spillage. And the CO is obviously there for the soda system, and again, that's something that a truck comes, connects to it and fills up. So nothing getting draped across the parking lot. If we go to the other side. This is the main view that you'll see when you pull into the lot and come in. It'll be what's facing the rest of the center, and you have all the elements on this face of the. Building also, again, the brick Wayne's coating across the whole spans of the building, the clapboard. The white clapboard, prefinished clapboard above, the awnings, the canopies over the windows and doors. And again, the signage at the front and their love my chicken on, I love that chicken on the side. That's pretty much the building.
Yeah, and I'll go to the next slide, I think, has some pictures of materials here.
Yes, the lower left is the hardy plank cedar select that is a white. The picture obviously shows it a little more grayed out, but it is, it's a white finish. The water table Wayne's coating of the brick, the gray brick, that is a Glengarry brick. The front elevation there, right under the front windows, that is a prefinished. Panelized system for the wood look under there. The next picture is the red brick again at the drive through element.
Now, you but you went, we were through, you went to our planning and design review. Some committee, twice, once, twice?
Twice.
Today was the last day.
Day was the last day, correct.
And it's all reflected in here or their comments are reflected?
Correct. Yes, we got a list of.
Say anything that we need to hear.
They said thank you. That's what they said to us today. They they said we were very responsive and they were appreciative.
Thank you.
Did have a list from the first meeting, and I pretty much think we. Got everything, everyone of their comments back to them within a week's time. And as Megan said, today, they appreciated the fact that we addressed everything to their liking.
Good. Thank you.
All right, so this is a slide that shows the lighting plan. We're installing lights. I've sort of circled them in red, so they're a little bit easier to see. And they have a mounting height of twenty feet above grade, and I have a picture in the lower right corner that shows what they look like. But, you know, full cut off fixture with LED light bulbs.
What's in the rest of the parking lot?
Peter, can you speak to that? I think it's a similar.
There's shoebox down, there's shoebox downlights, but they're metal halide fixtures. And our goal is to change them out to LED fixtures, which means actually means changing the whole head. And and we're doing them as they burn out.
Yeah. How how high are those poles?
Thirty feet, I believe.
Okay.
All right, the next, the next couple of slides, or no, the next slides have the signage details. These are the same images that we saw on the elevations. The. The entry side, which is the south side facing on the rest of the center, they have the love that chicken sign. Which is flush mounted letters. Sixty-five point four one square feet, also on that side in the the little tower you have there. Their illuminated logo, which is about seven square feet. On the Silas Dean side, this is the sign that you're seeing facing Silas Dean thirty-nine square point oh seven square feet. And on the drive through side, you just have. The, the, their circle logo, so I'll just quick go back to the.
Ground and lit up, is that correct?
Sure, so. This, the circle sign, which is on the south side, and also on the north side, those are lit up.
Yes.
That's, and then this sign obviously is illuminated, illuminated channel letters.
And the goose necks also.
And the goose necks as well, and what about the love that chicken, Robert?
The love that chicken is not.
Okay, so that's just illumine, that's just painted on or just letters not illuminated.
Yes, correct.
All right.
I could do without that.
And then I think just for my last slide here, I just have a couple of details of the clearance bars. This is the fencing that's going around the patio, which is located on the front of the building. I think that's my last slide. So we did today submit a list of responsive comments to Peter, Peter's memo. So Peter, did, did the commission see that? Is that something we should go through right now?
Came in late this afternoon, so it has not been forwarded to the commission members, so if you could walk through.
Sure.
The responses, that would be helpful.
Okay, Peter, do you wanna go through that list or Peter LaPointe? Do you want me to?
More than, more than happy to.
Okay.
The first comment was about the approval block on the drawings. And asked that we add an expiration date, which we said we would do. The second comment asked us to add the approval block on the title sheet, which Dana will do. There was a question about the existing site lights, the existing site lights on the property will remain. The lights Megan just showed you are specific to this tenant's parking lot in their building. Peter asked if if any remediation was required because of prior uses on the property. There have been a number of investigations over the years by environmental consultants, soil tests and groundwater tests. No remediation on this property is is required. Questions regarding the layout. We've reduced the existing paved surface. Along the Jordan Lane side, and we've, we've added landscape strip, lawn shrubs and trees. Street trees along that whole side.
How many?
Four plus, we just added another one today down by the dumpster enclosure, so there's a total of five street trees.
Is that all of the trees along there are shrubs?
On that side, that's all. Right, that's all of the deciduous trees. We also added evergreens. There's clusters, two. Two or three clusters of evergreens, plus the arborvitae around the dumpster enclosure. The, your standard of fifty foot on center would have required four trees. So the, the fifth tree is above and beyond. As for ADA parking, there was a question about updating the parking table, which. We will do, it has been updated to the shopping center standard, actually, a four per thousand. The ADA requirements for lots from two hundred to a thousand cars would be one percent. That would be four point something or five parking spaces. When the Popeyes is finished, we will have ten parking spaces on the overall shopping center that are accessible spaces. The building dimensions will be added to the the plan. They don't appear on the site plan right now. It's just a gross floor area, but we'll add the dimensions of the building. The proposed building is two thousand four hundred and fifty-four square feet. There was a conflict with the the first iteration of the traffic report, and that has been updated. And Oster has been notified, and I think your your town engineer was also noticed this morning. If I'm understanding you correctly, Peter, you were asking us to replace the stop sign on the shopping center driveway going out to Jordan Lane. And we will do that.
Excuse me, how about this corner walkway? Is that gonna be handicapped?
Which, there's the walkway on.
Up to the corner of Jordan Lane and Silas Dean.
The, the, there is a sidewalk along Jordan Lane that connects to the onsite sidewalk. Adjacent to the our Jordan Lane driveway, and we will add a pavement marking crosswalk. From the end of that sidewalk to the sidewalk adjacent to the existing building.
Yeah, let me.
So that suffices for something not being on the corner. Okay.
Right here, Peter, you're talking about?
Yes. That's actually a brand new sidewalk at that end where your cursor is right now. That was put in when when Price Right added that loading dock on that side and changed that parking layout. There, there were some dimensions that needed to be added to the zoning table. We will add them. The next item is the question that was just asked about handicapped accessibility. Basically pedestrian accessibility through that that side of the site, and that's, that's how that will be achieved. We are asking for outside seating at the, on the front patio of this restaurant. The tenant, because of COVID, has now indicated the, the probability that they will use that. Although I think the restaurant, like so many of the fast food restaurants we have, will be drive through driven for a while.
Wait a minute, this, this right here is the handicapped. Access from the shopping center, right?
What, what are you pointing to?
I'm pointing, I'm pointing to the lower half of the site here. Yeah, about right near that that one.
Handicapped access, handicap parking for the Popeyes restaurant.
Right, how do you get over from the shopping center?
Over here, right, Peter? You're coming, coming down.
Yeah, that side, that sidewalk has a handicap ramp right there.
We're crossing to the sidewalk here.
Right.
We're going down the sidewalk here.
I don't have an interconnecting crosswalk there. We could add a crosswalk there.
I think it might be a good idea. That's a very busy intersection.
It will, but we hope so. A crosswalk there is not a bad idea. I'm almost wondering, Dana, if you're still on, I'm almost wondering if the crosswalk shouldn't be dropped down. Along that sidewalk, so it lines up with the handicapped offloading area on the Popeyes site somehow. It's not quite direct, but it might be a cleaner, cleaner transition across the parking, across the drive aisle.
We could move this stop, stop bar back so that the crosswalk would would go perpendicular to the, to the drive aisle. So what you mean? And then, and and then from there, would you put a sidewalk across that island or would you?
I think we'd have to, and then you push, you can't have them walking in the driveway, and then we have to push it.
Yeah, then a perpendicular walk going across the island and then change that, that. That pedestrian walkway from the handicap spaces, you know, rotate it so it's perpendicular to the drive through lane. And then that would seem to.
Like, yeah.
Be a cleaner look, yeah.
All right.
Right, that's something we could address, I think, as a condition of approval. It seems like there's. An option.
I don't have a problem with that at all.
Yeah, if the, if the town planner thinks that's would be an improvement, then, then I think. We could, we could agree to that as a condition. Back with him and the town engineer.
If we want to make, like, if you're gonna make that a crosswalk, it's. Not to introduce anything more complicated to it, but potentially making that stop controlled. Instead of people being able to freely take that right around the Price Right property. Just to give them something to stop at that corner and then take the right, just in case somebody's, yeah, just, just in case somebody's. If if we're gonna start inviting people to use that, then we should protect them.
Peter, you okay with that?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
All right, very good. We talked about the the pavement marking also being added down below. Peter had asked about bicycle parking, and we will provide a bicycle rack. On the side of, I don't know where at this point, but. Our, our designer, Bill Maxwell, is a cyclist, so we, we traditionally let him tell us where he would normally park his bike, so.
You have a nice hatched area.
Yeah.
The last comment related, two comments related to landscaping. One was asking about our, our compliance with the, the standards and the ordinance, the zoning regulations. And we do show four street trees. Now we show five that changed this afternoon. Fifty feet apart along the Jordan Lane. Thirty percent of the development parcel is landscaped, and I think the requirement needs to be fifteen percent. We have added three trees in the perimeter landscape buffer. There was already a fourth, so we've got four all tall. The one your cursor's on now got moved this morning because it's, it was sitting on top of. The storm line. And then the, the. Last comment was related to waivers, and I think if I'm, if I'm understanding this correctly. The, the waivers we need to ask for are the, the, the islands within the parking lot. And the tree that would go on that island. And, and, and I guess the, that would also include the terminal, terminal islands at the end of each park row, I suspect.
Where?
Yeah, per the regs, we're supposed to have a landscaped island at the end of every row of parking, like we have here. But that's something down here that, as Dana mentioned earlier in the. Right, and the flood zone issue that we couldn't put there, so that's part of the waiver we're requesting. Okay, I think that was your, the last comment, right, Peter?
Yes, it was. The engineer's comments, I think, were, his comment one and two. Basically related to what he and Dana had agreed to at the Wetlands Commission meeting. Which was they would get together and resolve the. The, the infiltration of the roof drainage in a way that was acceptable to Derek. And the, the, his, the, his remaining comments were. And the the his, the his remaining comments were basically tweaks to the drawing, the set of drawings.
You didn't have
Excuse me?
Problem with any of them?
Sorry, could you repeat that?
And you didn't have a problem with any?
No, we did not.
All right, I'm not hearing anything. I don't know if there's another question or not, but I guess I'll just just jump in and say that I also just want to put into the record that we did do the required mailing to the butters and we also did post the sign for the public hearing as well. So we did comply with both of those portions of the regulation. We do meet all the criteria for the issuance of a special permit in accordance with the regulations. And we're happy to, you know, answer any additional questions that the commission has, but I think we've gone through the presentation that we prepared tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I guess if you want to stop sharing the screen, then kind of go back to seeing whether anybody has questions. All right, any, uh, any commissioners have questions for the for the applicant or anybody on their team?
Yeah, I had one quick question. Looking at the site plan, one thing you mentioned is that a majority of your customers will be drive through. Yet I see no trash containers or receptacles within the parking lot. Or will there be ones located there to deal with the onsite trash created through drive throughs? Parking?
I believe, um, I do know that there is a trash a trash can that is, I guess, westerly of the drive through exit, so almost like you could get your food, pull forward, and then there's a a a trash can right on your left. Um, Robert, do you know if they put any?
Hey, Megan, this this is Ed, if I if I could add. We do have a drive trash can with a drive through extender on the drive through side, like you're saying for the cars when they pull out. And we also have one on the entrance, the main entrance.
Okay.
I was gonna say that's usually laid out once we lay out the seating in the patio area to make sure we accommodate all ADA access through the area and then we'll lay out the garbage as a result of where it can fit.
Okay, I just want, because sometimes you've, when you go to a restaurant to do a lot of drive through, you see bags all over the parking lot and because people don't walk back to the buck, walk back to the restaurant.
Understand, it will be addressed and it will be on site.
Any other members of the commission have questions? Keeping in mind, this is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this application? Anybody? All right, if not, once again, do anybody on the commission have questions for the applicant? Peter, do you think that the?
Austin again.
Lost, can you repeat the question? Discussion sufficiently answered the the questions that you had.
It's catching up.
I think I know what you're. So I I I think if, I mean, a lot of the outstanding staff comments, I think, can simply be addressed with a condition that the final plans will be revised to satisfaction of both the town planner in the town engineer. So I think unless you guys have a material problem with with some of the answers, I think that can be handled that way. You had the other comment about adding the stop sign and the crosswalk by the handicap parking area, so I would add that as a condition once again to the satisfaction of town staff. There's the fourth condition on the on providing the waiver on the landscaping and I think I think that covers it. They did, just for the record, there's a copy of the Wetlands approval in the packet. Design review approval was issued today. Obviously, we didn't get you a letter to that effect, but I will testify that I did speak with Denise Bradley and she attended that meeting and it was approved without condition, so the revised plans reflect the comments previously made by the members of the design review committee. So I think with those four conditions, it at least covers the things that I I heard tonight or are still outstanding.
Okay, thank you. All right, one last chance. Anybody have any questions?
So I don't know if he's gonna, is he, is it, do you, do we think he's asking if anybody would like to motion to close the hearing? I would like to motion to close the hearing. So moved.
All right, seconded by Mike. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, extensions? Okay, hearing is closed. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve with conditions laid out by Peter.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Dave seconded. Peter, could you go over the the conditions again, just so that everybody's clear on what they are?
Sure, our first condition is the final plans are revised to reflect any of the outstanding comments made by the town engineer. Second, similar condition that the plans are revised to reflect the outstanding town planner comments. Number three, plans are revised to the satisfaction of town staff to add crosswalk, painted crosswalk, potential sidewalks. Stop sign and stop bars in and around the handicap parking areas as illustrated on the plans. And then lastly, that the requested landscape waiver is approved based on the the site plan as it was laid out.
That's the bold fine.
Okay, thank you. Right, any discussion?
Will the outdoor seating be something the staff addresses when they bring it to, if they decide to do it?
Yeah, we'll just need a, I was, at the time of the building permit, Bill's will will review that, but I I just wanted it the record to reflect that they did request that outdoor seating. It was unclear on on the earlier plans. So, uh, but the staff can work out those details.
Thank you. All right, any other questions?
Peter, George, you you still have the governor's approval for those, that kind of thing, so you don't even need us to comment on it, right? My staff.
Well, the governor's order isn't gonna last for forever, so I wanted the permanent outdoor seating, not the temporary outside.
Oh, okay, the permanent. I'm sorry, I thought you meant for the COVID.
Yeah, I don't think they'll have this open before February ninth, so. Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor of approval with the stipulations, please say aye. Opposed? Extensions? Motion carries, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
When when are you gonna put it in?
If the weather holds, they'll start immediately.
That would be good. We had another restaurant approved last year. You didn't go ahead. That's why we want to know.
We have a few things to work out with the prototype, but we'll be preparing the CDs ASAP.
Good.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.
Next item, public hearing, application twenty sixty-one twenty dash Z. Spiro and Julia Colores seeking the special permit in accordance with section five two F four of the Weather Steel zoning regulations for a change of use from mercantile to assembly and associated site improvements at two sixty-three Main Street. Brian, I'm going to recuse myself from this, so I will turn it over to you.
All right. Would the applicant like to give a brief overview of the application? Are you still on mute?
Okay.
There you go.
Yes, absolutely. So we did provide a narrative, so you guys have a little bit of an overview, but I will go over that with everyone right now. So we are basically trying to just revamp what we've already got going on, and I'm just gonna read this so that I don't mess anything up, but our plan for the interior is to expand the cafe and coffee juice smoothie area to allow for more equipment. A better workflow and a more efficient use of space. Well, I guess I should just preempt this all with the main part of the meeting, I think, is to change from our current zoning, which is mercantile to assembly. So just to put that in there. We'll be bumping out our front counter, adding
Ask a question, Megan? What is the difference in that zoning? And Peter, maybe you could answer the the, why this difference down there? I mean, I know it doing a lot, but why the zoning issue and why are we approving it?
So George, it's it's not changing in the zoning, it's changing in the use of the interior spaces of the building to basically expand the levels of activity that can occur here. Well, previously, your previous approvals were limited to certain activities. This particular approval, the the main change is the ability to have basically a place of assembly where more folks can gather and enjoy the business.
Like out in a greenhouse and stuff like that and outside. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so maybe I misspoke. It's not a change of zoning, it's a change of use. Sorry about that. Okay, so our plan is to basically just be revamping and expanding on what we're already doing. We'll be adding a lot to our interior kitchen space. Adding pastry and just and deli display cases, new equipment for our coffee station. Improved station where we can better display all that we offer, so our employees can have more space to work efficiently. We'll also be adding a bar area with counter seating, adding some local beers, fun wines, and a few cocktails to our current drink menu options. Our kitchen prep area will be making room for a walk-in cooler. We'll also have a new hotline. That'll be just so that we can expand our our menu offerings. We'll be adding more bakery equipment, some better ovens, just better bettering what we're already doing now. Our new hotline will, as our plan is now, be where the current bathrooms are. So we'll be moving the bathrooms to the other side of the building and also adding a couple more bathrooms to meet the proper building code with our change of use. We're hoping that the greenhouse area can be converted into a three season seating area with a sliding barn door that will open up into the main space. This will allow for more light and airflow. In the greenhouse, we'll be adding a new concrete floor, fixing the doors and just giving the space a bit of a facelift. In the market, we will reconfigure a bit, but just accommodate our indoor seating as well as the current display of seeds and all of our market items, grocery and retail. We'll be adding three new unisex bathrooms on the current main level. And then on the current main level, there's a sunroom, which the floor is a little bit lower than the rest of the space, so we'll be getting a new, a new floor that kind of raises up to match the elevation of the rest of the room. We'll be adding a wheelchair lift to that area so that the front space is handicap accessible. And in that front room, we'll be adding a new unisex ADA bathroom. And then also in that front room, there's two doors that open to the exterior. They currently open in, so we'll be reconfiguring them to open out that. Yeah, that's the, with the code and allowing for points of egress and the number of people that we want to be able to be in that room. And part of that is just reconfiguring slightly the the landing that those doors open out into. So let's see. We do have some exterior work planned, although that's not like in the plans immediately, but it's
General, general repairs, fixing sections of the roof, broken windows, things like that.
Yeah, just up, just upgrading some some areas of, especially the back barn area where there's some broken parts. There's some things that we just need to upgrade. We, in previous meetings, we have come up with some kind of traffic flow issues with the neighbors, so we're working with the town engineer. We we met with Derek and we've actually ordered some signs to kind of help, I think.
The traffic flow.
Yeah, it's it's a traffic flow issue. It's minor, but I think if we were were able to just kind of point people in the right direction.
So what what we do
Is there a problem with the traffic flow out there?
There, the the complaint has been that people, it's not it's not super obvious that there, that it's a one-way parking lot and that the parking lot at the other end kind of dog legs left for that being an exit.
Walk through it and
So what we
Prove that a little bit.
Yeah, I'm sorry, is it, we've ordered the first round of signs. We put one up, the other ones, they were a little too small. It didn't seem like they would kind of make the impact that we needed to. So we're just kind of reviewing some other signs or probably have them ordered next week and we'll just go through until we find the right ones that kind of clearly state, you know, the direction and the exit.
Yep, and then just to kind of recap everything, with the change of use from assembly, from mercantile to assembly. The parking calculations change, the bathroom calculations change, so we know in town, you know, parking can be an issue, so we took it upon ourselves to just kind of do a little bit of a survey and we currently have twenty-six spaces on premise. Two of them are handicap. We, let's see, my notes are a little So in the church lot across the street, we have an agreement with them and there's twenty eight immediate spots right across our street that are in between, there's like a brick house and a yellow house. I don't know what you technically call that lot over there, but there's, there's another twenty-eight spots that are basically available to us at any time if we have to have an event. And then also just the 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 street spots, so street parking from Hartford Ave to Church Street, there's thirty-eight speeds. Spots on that street, so we just wanted to kind of make a note of of all those spots and trying to see if there's any other points I want to get on here. I guess with with the parking, I guess our occupancy load is going up because of the change of use. And I think we're somewhere around three hundred people with the change of use. But one of the things, and we But one of the things, and we, uh, both of our architects are here to speak of this, so they can kind of help me with all this, but one of the things with this is that. At any given time, we're not gonna have three hundred people in the building, that's just because it's a huge space and that's what could be there. So we're, you know, we're thinking, oh, we might have an event for fifty people, but then we might also have our normal business with, which is another hundred, you know, so it's like. I can't imagine we would ever have this three hundred and forty-eight occupancy load at any given time. Um. So with the parking, we're just kind of trying to work that out and talk to you guys about what, um, what kind of is acceptable and what works and what makes sense.
So, um, I, I just have a quick question, the parking, so there's the letter. That outlines the need for the parking, I'm seeing eighty-one spaces, you have twenty-three plus two, uh, just heard you say twenty-six.
Yeah, yeah, we actually have twenty-six, I think there's a typo in one of those, yeah.
No problem. Um, but, uh, one of them that's like coming out, you're gonna have designated spots now for, for people to get in and, and take out? Like, just because of the increased production, is that what I'm seeing according to this letter? So you're gonna designate some, there's like three, three spaces for takeout, I was seeing, I was just, I'm curious if you're taking some of those onsite and making it. More accessible for people who are just going in to grab food and leaving, because that's gonna be a little bit more of a. Business model of yours with, with this expansion potentially. But we currently have, I believe, the first five spots when you come in, first four spots, I'm sorry, um, designated as, as pickup spots. Um, oftentimes, people, people do park there, um, if there's no other spots available. But it's very rare that we have more than one or two cars at any given time that are waiting for food to be picked up at this current time. Um, it's something that we put into place for, for COVID, when we, when we launched our online ordering, that didn't, that didn't exist for us, uh, pre-COVID. So, um, yeah, it's, it's a bit of a work in process for, for that, for sure. I think when, you know, just in general, for the meeting itself, I think we. Tend to talk about parking, obviously, quite a bit in this area, and, you know, there's. We, we've, we've talked about it, we all know there's not enough parking, but we know that, uh, on, onsite, I should say. Like, we all know that, like, pretty much any business that comes in doesn't have enough, like, parking right in front of their area or on a parking lot. Um, but I think when we did the study. Um, when was that done, Peter? Was that last year?
Earlier, yeah, uh, yes, no, earlier this year, sorry.
So the, the findings of that were. That we had ample parking in the vicinity, is that like, like, is that how we came away from that? And we, we would then do our best to accommodate people as close to the business as possible, however, there's plenty. On, you know, in the, in the vicinity of the, of Main Street, and then we can. You know, the businesses will have to lure their customers in from afar as opposed to like directly in front of their building. That's, that's the general takeaway that, and that's the, the mood of the town?
Y- yes, I mean, yeah.
I'm not, oh, sorry, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, that's, that's the mood of me, uh, so it like, you know, I'll, I'll just, I'll throw that out there, uh, just in case, uh, there's a further parking discussion.
No, the parking study indicated there's, uh, plenty of available parking, um, primarily. If you factor in First Church parking lot, uh, as these applicants are, and you factor.
Specifically for them, yeah, that's right.
Parking lot and some other parking lots, as long as they get used, um, by people, then there's not an on-street, um, or off-street parking issue. And I, there's a letter in the, in the correspondence from Todd Willard at First Church indicating, uh, that he's, uh, we're kind of finally negotiating. Some of the terms of that, um, but he's certainly making that parking available, uh, to the patrons of the, uh, the market, uh, uh, as long as. You know, i- it's all about making sure the businesses also encourage their, uh, employees, uh, as well as their patrons. Uh, to be aware of those off-site spaces and, and use them, um, that's really the, the, the bottom line here. So, going for, and I think in the, in the correspondence with this applicant, they've, uh, uh, agreed and are willing to notify their patrons. Uh, for large events about the availability of that parking lot, so it's all about people using it, however.
Great, thank you.
And Comstock, Peter, is not encouraging. Activity, uh, on Sunday mornings.
I'll, I'll let them answer that one.
No, what, it's in there, in the, the material, yeah.
Well, well, as far as, yeah, Todd Willard was saying that that lot is not as available on Sunday mornings, correct? Yeah, so, so if we were gonna do an event on a Sunday, we would.
It's a big lot anyway.
You're right, we would encourage it to be maybe, you know, after the, the church kind of service is over, but, um, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we, we have a tendency of not booking large events during Sunday mornings or Saturday mornings anyway, because. It's such a busy time for our business that it's kind of productive to have. It's, it's hard to pull it off during that time, so we have a tendency of scheduling those things much later.
And some of the letters, one of them I know that were sent supporting you, uh, a lot of them from all Weatherfield people, but. A lot of them supporting you, uh, said, uh, and one or two of them, I think, suggested let the people walk if they need to. And, uh, that happens in other parts of, uh, congested areas.
Yeah, I think, I think there is a great thing in town where if we were to direct people to the first, first church lot and the Kini Center parking lot. If, if we're able to let them know that those parking spots are there, people will park there and walk, absolutely, they'll.
How, how are you gonna do that? Letting low signage, uh, a part of your.
Our business personally?
Yeah.
Suggestions on the menus, suggestions on the websites, um, yeah, I mean, we, there's a lot of things we can do internally, like, you know, putting. Correspondence, like, uh, suggestions on, on our website and our, on our menus in, in the building itself, and it also presents opportunity for. People to stroll past or walk past businesses that they might not have seen or actually been by before.
Yeah, good idea.
Walking isn't such a bad thing.
I think it would be great to.
More people are walking now than ever.
Yeah, absolutely, but I do think it'd be great if the town put some signs up too, you know, for, for encouraging people to park in those spots.
Okay, so, Peter, was there anything, um, I was reading through some of the materials, I realized there was a pretty lengthy. Uh, permitting history, but anything specific? Related to this, there was, so there's the parking, is that? There was, there was the parking, and then there was like the internal facilities of the building itself, like, was the parking the only thing that we wouldn't be meeting?
Yes, I mean, they're not expanding the building, they're not, um, you know, doing any of the normal, uh, site, site improvements that you would be, uh, commenting on, they're not, uh, changing the parking. Um, from, uh, as it exists today, so it really, uh, boils down to just increasing the intensity, um, of the use of the, of the business. Therefore, you know, generating more of a parking demand, but I think you've got, um, adequate information, uh, in the file indicating that. You know, there's available off-site parking, uh, public as well as, uh, the agreement with First Church, and just for the record, we're waiting, uh, for First Church to. Kind of sign out, sign off on our memorandum of agreement, uh, within that agreement, we had, uh, proposed that we would, uh, install. Uh, some signage identifying that lot as. Sort of semi-public parking, uh, but we're, and we're just waiting for them to agree to the final. Terms of, of the agreement, so, um, so we're certainly willing to do that, uh, at the, uh, at the appropriate time to make. Uh, folks aware of that, uh, parking un- under whatever terms and conditions the church, you know, would, would expect of us, so.
Got. Any other members of the commission with any questions?
Yeah, a couple of them, Chairman, two, two items, uh, in our materials. One question was, your outdoor table service is, is allowed or isn't allowed at wine? The applicant, I don't know, something like that in there.
The table service in the back? Are you talking about currently or the proposed?
I don't know, proposed, I guess. You know, there can't be any outdoor table service or.
There, there, there can be, um, you know, right now, how, how we run our business now is, um, it's counter service. And so people are taking their food from the counter and they're bringing, they're, they're going to their table and sitting down eating. Um, things may change when we have like a, a designated, um, more de- defined designated patio area when we do start serving alcohol. So that we would have probably table service at that point, so that people aren't just like strolling on and off the property with alcohol, so. That would be much more defined and, uh, possibly.
That might come later.
Right, whether it be roped off or fenced in or something like that, so it's, it's a bit more. That was why. Want to put in as much control as possible. Everyone just put in as many controls as possible to make sure that, that, that we're the ones handling the alcohol and serving it to the customer.
The other question I had was lighting. Sure, I got lighting question mark here and I'll.
Yeah, that's his own question, yes, they will have lights.
No, but, uh, you know, are you gonna have outdoor lighting, is it adequate and everything? I mean, Peter, maybe, you gotta answer that, I don't know.
Is that, is that something that's related to, to this?
I think so, I don't know why I would have written it down otherwise.
You know, when we, when we signed our lease, um, the previous, the previous, um, owners of the property. They did install some lighting, they installed some lighting in the front of the building that currently goes over the front, uh, to, and the front, the front entranceway. Um, where we are, not the, not the one right on Main Street, but the one that's recessed where our main entrance is. They installed lighting there and on the corner and then down on the barns, um, so I think it's like a couple of corners and then the barn down at the end. Um. If, if the situation, there's always some talk in the past about there is a light post there from a previous back, probably when it was Comstock. Um, it's on the opposite side of the parking lot, that shines down, um, there is conduit going to it. Um, so that if you had to run wire, you could, but I think that they might have shut that off as a courtesy for. The, the neighbors on the other side of that fence, but, um, you know, we're certainly willing to put more lighting in to make it safer at nighttime, but.
Well, my question.
We have plans for it right now.
My question would be, do you think it's adequate lighting, and if you don't, Peter, do you think there is, or the town engineer?
I just.
I think it probably is in there, but I don't know.
Um, no, they're probably, it probably isn't satisfactory to today's standards, but I think, um. You know, it's, it's all about what their future plans are for utilizing that outside, those outside.
Yeah, they're only using the outside and the, yeah, the, uh, greenhouse somewhat here, but not the rest of the back area. And, okay.
Yeah.
In other words, the lighting is adequate for present circumstances and what they're proposing, okay.
I, I would say it's adequate for what we need right now, but yes, if we were to kind of extend the hours a little bit or have outdoor seating. Into, into any, you know, darker hours, we would, we would definitely just update it to what it needed to be.
Just come back into us.
Yeah.
That's all.
Yeah. Yep.
Any other questions from any commission members?
One, one of the questions I had was about, um, exterior improvements. And you mentioned repairs, repairs to roof and, and some windows, was there any thought to, to painting the building or, or? Any other exterior improvement?
Um, yeah, so, um. We are actually in talks with a couple of different, uh, contractors right now, um, currently the. The current kind of siding on the white portion of the building have all been stained, they were stained probably in two thousand nine, I think it was. Um, two thousand nine, maybe, I'm not sure, but, um, we are talking to come up with, figure out what the best thing is, whether we paint it or stain it again. But it'll probably, that's probably something we're hoping to do in the spring.
Okay.
Um, and we're talk, we're talking to contractors now just about that, um, the roof and stuff like that, that's, right now, it's more repairs rather than. Replacing the whole thing, you know, we, we're just, we're just generating revenue now to do that, but our goal is to replace large section of roof, but we have, we're just gonna do some. Um, repairs right now, um. With other upstairs, there's some like cracked windows that need to be replaced, and that we're, we're, we'll be checking that off the list. Um, and then, uh, this, all, all this stuff, this kind of happens simultaneously, once we, once we get going with the inter- with the interior renovations. We'll be kind of checking some of this, some of the stuff off the list as well, um, obviously, the painting will come later when, when the weather kind of turns around a bit. Um. In the back where the barns are, the doors, um, even, even though we're not gonna be doing, um, much inside there at this moment. But like things like replacing the doors that are broken with the same type of doors, obviously, we'd get historical approval before we did anything like that, um, and. Repairing whatever siding we could before we replace it. But, you know, um, if it's, if it's not nice enough to repair or in shape enough to repair, we'll replace it, we kind of have that, um. We, we, we're kind of held to that by the, uh, the SBA kind of situation that we have with the state as well, with the state historical, um, so yeah.
You know, you're thinking about it, that's good.
Yeah, the answer is, the answer is that, like, we, there's some things we just can't wait to get to, we're, we're, we're chomping at the bit, you know, but, uh, but the answer is yes.
Okay. And I think the other question I had, I was taking a look at, uh, the proposed plan, was the gazebo intended to stay in the same location, was that gonna be removed?
We, we didn't have plans to remove it, the only, the only thing that, when we look at the gazebo would be to, um. Repair, repair it, and, I mean, I'm not, I'm not sure what the pricing on gazebos are nowadays, but, uh, the roof on that thing needs to be replaced, and I'm not sure if that's even worth it, or if it's worth just replacing the whole thing at that point. I'm not sure how much that would cost, but it, that, that's kind of on the list of, of repairs as well, but, uh, we weren't considering moving the gazebo, no.
Okay, for some reason, I thought it wasn't on the plan anymore, and so that's why I asked, why I.
Oh.
Okay, but I, I might have misread it, you know.
Yeah, you know, I think originally, yeah, because you know what, on the plan. It's the blow up of the second story there. It's labeled as garden area, that's, that's how, because that's how, um, the previous owners. Had all that, those three, the two long triangles in that square as gardens place, the gazebo was moved on to that later.
Okay, well, thank you for clarifying that, that's all I have for questions.
Any other questions from the commission? Before I move on to any public comment, unless there's, uh, uh, any further discussion from the applicant, you mentioned. Architect potentially, but just wanted to give you guys a chance. Good to go, move, move on to public? I think, I think, I think we're okay. Cool. All right, if there's, if there's anybody from the public who wishes to comment, um. Seeing one number one-four-five-three. Or is that somebody that we know? It's probably Tom. I'll ask again, phone number one-four-five-three. Got any comments? Just want a sandwich, nothing? Alright. Uh.
Alright.
Open it up, any, if anybody else has any other comments, uh, before we, uh, move on to potentially, uh.
Mr. Chairman, for the, uh, uh, record, uh, there were a number of emails from people in town.
Right.
Most of them complimentary, most of them saying, uh, there's adequate parking down there and we shouldn't be concerned with it and so forth.
Yeah, I was gonna run through those real quick, we have, um.
Okay, if you are.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was just trying to give everybody a chance to voice their opinions first and then, uh, move on to these, we have. Do have the correspondence, um, for the parking spots, we had, uh, you mentioned, um, Todd, I'm looking for his last name, Todd Willard. Uh, you had the correspondence between him saying, uh, that, um, you know, you would, you would have less access to the parking lot on your, on Sunday mornings during their services.
You also have very delicious sandwiches, according to that email. All right, so you had your response to that, the other emails. We have one here from Kim Wolf, historic district coordinator. Thank you for the update. Doors, you're going to use the existing doors and to replace them in kind, which is you just discussed, trying to replace everything you can with something that's either already existing or in kind. Sounds like we're in line with that. Was, was there any other correspondence? I had to, yep. Hello, phone number one, four, five, three. How's it going?
How are you? Good night. Good night to all the commissioners. Julia Spear, good night. How are you? I was saying hello earlier. This is Paul Brady at sixteen eighteen Church Street. Julia and Spear, thanks for actually coming over and attempting to talk to us. Covid doesn't make that easy, given that, you know, people work from home and kids are home. It's just tough. So sorry that we didn't connect before that. You know, I, I really don't have much to say. I feel like it's going to be the same thing, like we spoke before. The only thing I could say is that I think my wife and I are in sync on this part. When we say that, you know, we want to see your business and you guys succeed. Obviously, we also want to make sure that it is safe. The only thing, only comment that we've, that we have is would be the same thing, the signage. Somehow I'll get people to not speed through that parking lot. And, you know, that's, that's pretty much all I have. Other than that, I would, I would say that I, you know, hope the commissioner gives you guys what you guys have been looking for to ensure that you guys succeed here. That's really what we have for emails. Good night and good luck.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, thank you. We're, and we're working on that stuff, Paul. We'll get, we're going to get it done.
Yeah, that, that triggered a memory from an earlier sort of pre-application where we were discussing potentially some traffic calming, either some, some seasonal speed humps or, or, you know, something temporary that you wouldn't have to get in the way of snow removal or anything like that. But, um.
Yeah, we've been talking with the town. We, we had a meeting with Derek. And unfortunately, because of the brick, we can't really put any sort of speed bumps or speed humps. But we are, we've gotten some signage and we're going to try to, to, to fix that issue just with, you know, getting our customers aware of how things are supposed to go.
Yeah, we're just in a process of getting the correct signage. With the first round that came in, like I said earlier, just, just to make sure that we just kind of tap on this one more time, is that the signs that we got, they just, they weren't the right size and they're, they wouldn't make enough of an impact. So we're just, we're just reordering new signs and signs that will just have the, the desired result, you know?
Okay. Yeah, sometimes even narrowing, sometimes even narrowing the corridor with like some planters or something like that is enough to to make people go a couple miles an hour slower.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's a good idea, actually.
Yeah.
Sorry, was it Paul? One, four, five, three? Did you have something further?
Well, you know, like I said, nothing further from us. I mean, anything else that would be needed where we're concerned, I think we could, my wife and I will be happy to approach Julie and Spear and we could talk about that. That's more of a neighborly issue than something that needs to be spoken, spoken about on this call. So thank you, guys. Good luck with everything.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Over to back up. If there's any other comments, anybody else chiming in? Otherwise, I think, I don't know if we're ready to close the hearing. Was that all the correspondence that we had? That's all I'm seeing in the packet that I have here.
You had seventeen letters.
I had all those emails that you sent. What am I even talking about? I have to open those back up again.
If you want me, I'll go, I'll go through them real, real.
That would be, that would be wonderful. I forgot all those. I have them right here.
Okay, I'll, I'll crank through them. So we have, these are all actually letters of support. So we have Beth Riley, Dawn Silver, Gail Spader, three eighty-eight Church, Jason Silver, eight thirty-nine Knot Street, Jessica Barton, four thirty-one Church Street, Kate Hanley, thirty-four Dorchester, Kelly Kamay, Kamay, if I'm pronouncing that right. I don't think there's an address here. Jack McConnell and Jack is at one eighty-two Broad Street. Paul Montanari, I think you know that name. Russ Moran, four ninety-five Brimfield Road, I think you know that name. Patty Maury Maritko, I'm sorry if I mispronounced that, thirty-three Mayfield Road. Norman Cavoli, fourteen Center Street, Sarah Piers, one forty-five Broad, Rachel Novak, three thirty-four Ridge, Rosalyn Bravo Cavoli. I don't think there's an address here. Sarah Gantley, sixteen The Cartway, Susan Barton at five, five Main. I think that covers all of those that I've received anyway. And they were forwarded to all of the commission members as a packet this afternoon. So I was waiting to the last, they kept coming in every day. So I waited to the last minute so we didn't have to send you seventeen separate emails.
I appreciate it. All right, with that, do I hear a motion to close?
It's all made, Mr. Chairman George.
And I'll second that.
So, oh, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Um, all right, so with that, any further commission discussion? So we talked about there's just the traffic is the only, or sorry, traffic, I'm thinking of the last application. So just the parking. I mean, we can, we can discuss potentially the, the traffic calming up in the other area. But I don't know if that's necessarily related to this specifically or if we would wait for that to be like a, more of a, like a site plane review once that, once that starts to happen or?
That was a previous condition from the last approval, which involved the liquor.
Okay.
So we would.
I don't, I don't remember that being a, a condition of that. So that's, so we, we can, we can leave that, we can leave that. So it's really, are we trying to make a motion to approve this without any?
So the motion should just reflect the fact that they are asking for permission to apply the flexible parking standards of section six point two, which is our village business district off-site parking provision. So the motion, just, just for the record, should reflect that you're granting relief under those provisions so that it's clear that they're getting relief from the normal parking standard that's was illustrated in their, in the packet of information. So they're, they're in that number and, but you have the authority based on the regulations and the testimony by the applicant that included the use of the First Church parking and the public parking available on Main Street and the surrounding streets.
Motion made, Mr. Chairman, to approve with the conditions laid down by Peter Gillespie.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Post? Abstentions? Motion carries.
When you going to start the work?
Tomorrow.
He always chimes in with that last question. He's just like, when, when do I get to use a sandwich?
Good.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Letters and memos and everything we got.
Oh, thank you so much. Yeah, we, I, I saw a lot of those letters and there's some tears that I'm holding back right now because it feels good.
I saw so many, I forgot about it.
Yeah. We appreciate it so much. We appreciate all of you taking your time. You know, it's late and thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Congrats.
Especially during COVID time. It's excellent what you're doing.
Thank you. Yeah, we're trying, trying really hard. Thanks to Jeff and Breck, even though you had to just sit here and.
I wanted to give him a chance to talk, but.
We just share his backup.
Thank you.
We would have just added confusion to the whole thing, so.
Yeah.
But thank you. Thank you. I'm going to hand the reins back over to the actual Commissioner Roberts.
Yeah, I've been moving from room to room, looking for better internet.
I saw that. You were in a different room. You came in a little clearer. It's nice.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm in the house now.
Oh, okay.
Rich, we need to get you some five G down in that neighborhood of yours.
Seriously.
Yeah, really. Better dial up. Do we have any other business?
Nope.
Okay. Minutes, we got them today. I don't know. Has anybody had a chance to look at them?
I haven't. That doesn't mean anything. Somebody wants to make a motion, it's up to you.
No, I haven't looked at them either.
Let's table it and we'll, we'll put it in the next packet.
Okay. Staff reports?
Um, I'm just trying to think if there's anything extremely noteworthy. We do have a, we do, we do have a, only one application at the next meeting. All it is is an accessory structure, but the gentleman is eager to get the approval. And, and he's already ordered the structure. So I would, I would have normally pushed it out till after the new, after the holidays. But so you only have one item for your next meeting. But unfortunately, the applicant wants to, wants to stay on the schedule. You will have a couple more at the first meeting in January.
Okay. Thanks.
George.
George.
Somebody said there's another restaurant that's going to be going into the board. And then my other question is, what is, you heard from Chase on the, about the corner of Mill Street?
Yeah, we're waiting for Chase to start. We've, the chairman signed the milars and they've been filed. So I'm not sure. They may have decided to hold off now that the winter is approaching. But they haven't indicated officially that they're not going to move forward. So, and I can neither confirm nor deny your inquiry about the board.
Well, it's just somebody brought it up to me today and I.
I don't want to jinx anything, so I'm not going to.
I don't blame you. No. Only if you know.
You mean, you mean we could have two Popeyes in town?
No, well, I can, I can confirm that it is not a Popeyes.
Okay, well, that's good.
It's at least got to be a drive-through, so we, we got it. We're good.
How's the corner of Middle Town Ave and the restaurant issue? And, and our town engineer's issue with the traffic matters out on Maple.
I, I haven't heard anything on that, so I'm not sure it's a.
Nothing more.
And I'm not sure it was unanticipated anyway, so, no, it's been quiet. The, that developer is just finishing up the, the former pet supply up on the Berlin Turnpike. So that's wrapping up now. So once that's done, he may refocus on other things, so.
Yeah, that, that building looks really good.
Hey, they did a nice job on that.
All without any help.
No, we did.
A recent help, I mean.
Well, we did help with the facade program on that.
Oh, you did? Oh, okay.
Yes.
Which building is that?
The old pet supply up on the Berlin Turnpike. It's, I think it's seventeen thirty-three Berlin Turnpike.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
I would say it's next to the gas station, but that doesn't narrow it down any.
Okay, I'll have to check it out. Speaking of, of pets and, and quiet, any feedback on some of the neighbors by the, the, the doggy daycare and the wall that, that we had them put in?
I have not heard from the neighbors, not, that's not to say that the animal control officer, a lot of those complaints were going directly to the police department, but I haven't seen any of that recently. The fence, the fence is materially completed. The, the sound engineer required that they make additional improvements to meet his specifications. So they were working, they had to order some more material. I was just thinking about that today. So they were trying to get them to wrap that up before the snow fly. So hopefully that will still happen. Obviously, we had originally hoped to have this in this, done in the spring. But the, I've asked the building inspector to go out there and do a formal inspection. He's down a couple of staff people, so he probably hasn't gotten to it yet. But I, yeah, I, I think, hopefully it's related that, you know, now that they're finished, it's actually effective and they're not, we're not getting the complaints. But I cannot say that just yet. We, we did require a report from the sound engineer in order to close this out based on his inspection. So hopefully we'll see that shortly.
And who is that sound engineer? Is it their consultant, their sound engineer that they hired?
Yes, yeah, so we, we required a certified report from him with his stamp and seal.
Okay, yep.
Good. Public comments? I don't see any public correspondence, nothing. And the one eighteen Tubro for the next meeting. Is there anything else anybody wants to discuss before we adjourn?
Just one other thing, we, we, we will likely be losing our very qualified recording secretary in the very near future. So if anyone knows of anyone who might be interested in some part-time, you know, hours of preparing minutes in attending these fascinating meetings and conversations, please send them my way. So we will be looking for somebody to fill Julie's shoes. So just wanted you to be aware of that. So she's going to hang in there until we find, find somebody, but she's not working full time. So she doesn't have the time.
Well, Julie's the best. She's the best on these meeting minutes.
She was good, but you're right.
It, it's not because of George, so I just want.
No, I'll go up to my neighbor Ellen up the street and ask if she wants to come back to us.
There you go.
And she'll say, no, you're crazy. Get out of here.
Yeah, maybe we can get Phyllis to come back.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, anything else? Not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion's all made.
All right.
I'll, I'll be the second. That's fine.
Okay. Second by Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, thanks very much.
Well, everyone.
Thanks, everybody. Have a wonderful night.
Take care.
Have a good night.
Best wishes all.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.